2024 Regular Meeting of the Union County Board of Commissioners to Order. At this time, I recognize Vice Chairman Brian Hildes for the invocation.
If you're so inclined, please join me in prayer. Dear only Father Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for all of your blessings upon our county, our state, and also our nation. Lord, I want to take a minute and thank you for all the mothers out there, Lord, as we've celebrated Mother's Day here recently. I want to thank you for all of them that give selflessly for the next generation. We're blessed to have them. Lord, as we've celebrated our law enforcement this week, Lord, I want to give thanks for all of those that serve us and protect us. Lord, tonight I ask your blessings upon this board. I ask your blessings upon all that are here. Lord, I ask that you provide us with guidance, with your wisdom, and your discernment, Lord, to make the best decisions possible for Union County. For it is in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether the same or at separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Ronald Barros.
Hi, my name is Ronald Barros. I'm a resident of Union County, and I live on Curling Creek Drive in the Heritage Development. From looking at some of the parts of the book that Steve got or thing, there's a lot of questions in there that I have to ask. We spent a lot of money for land to build a place to take care of the sewage. That's never been done. But what are we doing with that property? Are we just holding it for something else? The other thing is, how did Kohler ever get three releases in that community if it was in 2016, they said they were going to have a problem? How did they ever get three signed releases to do that? They should have never got a release. I just want to say, I sure hope we can do something about it. It is quite a smelly mess, and I would just like to say, God bless all our law enforcement people, and I'd like all the people from the Heritage to stand. I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Worgen.
Good evening, folks. Good to see you again. My name is Steve Worgen. I am a resident of Union County. I do live in the Indian Trail area of Heritage, and it is about the sewer smell that I'm here to speak. Just want to remind everybody, Monday Night Football is in exactly 112 days. I hope not to be spending my Monday nights here talking about sewer smells in 112 days. More seriously, I saw the agenda items, and apparently part of that topic, I'll be anxious to see where that goes, is on the recommendations that John's office gave several months ago. And that was that a pilot program be initiated by a vendor, and it would be a one- to two-month program. If the recommendations, if it were viable, and we decide to move forward, then the vendor would waive part or all of that $70,000, which is the maximum outlay, then it would turn to an annual contribution for the water treatment. If tonight is just a reiteration of that, a reminder of that discussion, and no decision is going to be made to actually initiate the pilot program, then I will view that as a kicking can down the road again. However, if it is the intent to have a vote and decide whether or not that pilot program, then I can promise you that in the two years I've been at this, in all the meetings I've had, I've tried to take a high road and tried to feel that reasonable people with reasonable information could come to a reasonable conclusion. I'll continue to do that, and I can tell you that it's not easy to do that these days. In the event that is not going to happen tonight, and there's not a vote, we would ask this body to please meet with us in the next seven days. There's several of us, four or five of us, would like to have that conversation and find out what your intentions are. If that doesn't happen, I just think you need to be aware of what's about to happen. The community is actually fed up, and they have been for a long time. Several of us have been sort of keeping our finger in the dike, in the dam, and people are going to start to go to the press. People have already said that we've already reached, some folks have already reached out to different representatives in the state. People are going to start protesting the last phase of development we have going up with the new 130 homes coming. And they're going to start to coalesce and get together when it comes to elections coming up. So there's a lot of things that we've been holding off on because we really want a decision on this. I hope you'll do that tonight. I'll support this body if that's the direction we're heading. If not, please understand that a lot of folks are really getting past upset. Thank you for listening to me one more time. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Georgianne Eccleston.
My name is Georgianne Eccleston. I'm a resident of Union County, and I live in the Heritage Development and Indian Trail. I'm here to speak about resolving the issue of sewer gases being released into my community. Smelly, unhealthy sewer gases are building up in and being released by our local sewer line. That has been confirmed by the County Water Department. They have attested to the noxious, unhealthy gases. The original approval of the Heritage Sewer System by the Union County Water Department was based on a new sewage treatment plant that was recommended in 2016. That recommendation was accepted by the board. The board further acted on this recommendation in 2022 by purchasing land for a new sewage treatment plant. The plant has not been built. Construction of what was needed in 2016 has not even begun, and here we are in 2024. I think that this board should explain to its constituents why you spent $4.6 million in 2022 and did not move forward with what is obviously and sorely needed. Why is that $4.6 million lying fallow? Who is it benefiting? It's certainly not your constituents. Those of us most seriously impacted by your failure to act are not insisting that you build the plant and do it now. We are, however, insisting that you take responsibility for your prior actions and follow the current two-step recommendations of the Union County Water Department. Step one is diluting and treating the waste at a pumping station prior to it entering our community. Step two is using filters at the manhole to reduce the remaining sewer gases. Both steps are required to manage the sewer odor. Both steps are required to manage the sewer odor. To date, only step two, filters at the manhole, have been implemented. We hope that you will approve, fund, and implement both of the recommended steps. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Lang.
Good evening. I'm Sandy Lang. I live at 1136 Curling Creek Drive in Indian Trail, and I'm a Union County resident, and I'm with the Heritage South Odor Subdivision. So I'm here to discuss the odor affecting our subdivision. The gases are a concern. I don't want our subdivision to become a Camp Lejeune. I am frustrated with the Band-Aid approach this board has taken. Filters are useless without the chemical application at the pump station. Tearing up roads and backyards is only redirecting the odor to become someone else's problem. This board has been reactive instead of proactive. Land was purchased prior to the cul-de-sac development for $4.6 million for the new Yadkin Basin Treatment Plant that was never built. With new areas of development all around us, how is Union County keeping up with infrastructure such as water, sewer, roads, and schools to accommodate this growth? President Biden has an infrastructure bill sitting in Congress. Is Union County prepared to ask for money? Has anyone inquired what the state of North Carolina can contribute to the cause? Grants, low interest loans, et cetera? Has anyone requested a quote from builders and a timeline of how long it would take to build a sewage treatment plant? We need this information so the facts can be taken to the voters of Union County in a referendum voted on as soon as possible. Growth is great for Union County. However, it is also the responsibility for Union County to provide the infrastructure to sustain this growth. Bottom line, we want answers. We've been patient for four years. It would be nice to hear that Union County has a plan and is prepared to move forward with a solution. I suggest you approve the chemical treatment and filters as a temporary fix until the new treatment plant can be built for all. God bless you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Kemper.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Kemper, and I'm a resident of Union County and also of the Heritage Subdivision, living at 1149 Curling Creek Drive. I am also a licensed Realtor, and I'm speaking to you as a professional and also for a personal reason. I come to you today to ask for a positive resolution to this situation. I presently have a listing at 1309 Curling Creek Drive, which happens to be part of the estate of my mother's home. I also am one of the heirs of that home and the listing agent. We had to fill out, as I stated last month, the North Carolina Residential Property Disclosure, which every seller must give to a potential buyer, explaining what the house has. If there is a question, you are supposed to say, carefully review it, and tell the truth to the best of your knowledge. Sometimes you can answer yes or no, and then there's also no representation. No representation means that you may know there's a problem, but you choose not to disclose it. It has bothered me since the last month as to whether or not we actually have answered the questions correctly on the disclosure that is on my mother's home, given out to potential buyers and real estate agents. So today I did contact the North Carolina Real Estate Commission and got a response from the legal counsel. He said, and I quote, "I think it's debatable whether or not question number 26 needs to, in the current residential properties, would require a seller to say yes." It doesn't, because the question is, is there an odor related by military, industrial, or commercial sources? And being that this is a public utility problem, I wasn't really sure. He said, so it is, but it is a public utility source. However, this is the part that professionally becomes an issue. It is a material fact that a listing agent would have to disclose to prospective buyers prior to an offer being made that there is this situation going on. Therefore, I can't, it cannot hurt a seller to answer yes with an explanation. The disclosure for 1309 does say yes to answer number 26, and an explanation has been given. We have had this house on the market for 44 days. It is now completely undervalued. I have had major price reductions, and I personally and professionally believe that the situation and the answer to question number 26 is causing people not to move forward with an offer. We've had plenty of people looking at it, no offers. They tend to go someplace else. People think this is going to go away, and it's not going to affect the values of our neighborhood. I respectfully ask you to understand that this issue needs to be resolved. It will, and it has, and it will continue to have an impact on the value and sales of our homes. So I respectfully ask you to understand the negative impact that this does have on this community moving forward. And I ask you both professionally and personally to answer, to vote yes on the situations that are on the table. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
Hello, Dr. Amanda Stanford. I live in Indian Trail as well, but I'm not here about the smell. In January, the Harvard Business Review predicted, in this new age of AI, people who can build networks of trust will do infinitely better than their peers. It seems that resumes and fancy schools will count for getting your foot in the door, but what keeps you in the building is how much people trust you. Which brings me to the definition of moderation, the avoidance of excess or extremes. In Union County, most of us are moderates. I spent the last 18 years of my life around college students, and people ask me the same question, how have kids changed? And I will tell you that they don't change nearly as much as their parents do, and not nearly as much as we think the world does. And this is where moderation comes in, and why it's so important to remember to choose it again and again. Moderation is keeping to the middle road, neither varying too far left nor too far right. We've allowed the most extreme elements to dictate our views. Extremism is destroying the values that we've worked so hard to build, and entitlement teaches us to belittle achievement. But truth does matter, and simple is still best. American values are still moderation, grit, and working together. I realize that no one wants to pay taxes, but why aren't corporations paying more taxes in Union County? Because we're afraid they will not come here. So what? Half of us don't want them here anyway. Make them pay their fair share. Besides, most will still come here because they'll still pay less tax and have better weather and resources than they do up north. Secondly, why have we ignored our Latin American community? That is one population that we've taken a lot of data from in the form of DACA recipients. By and large, we have found that they pay more taxes, support more people per capita, and are more upwardly mobile than any other population group in the United States as a whole. Listening to propaganda about them is not only silly, but goes against Union County's own best interests. Now, we've had a month of graduations this past few weeks, and I'd like to leave you with the words of one of my students. Rituals, like graduations, are what make people proud to be who they are. A group of people cannot thrive without rituals because they force us to handle the little things in life so we can come together and form something big, and this is what makes life meaningful.
Our next speaker is Garrett Hogan.
My name is Garrett Hogan. I'm a Union County resident. I live in, yes, Heritage South. Some of my comments have already been mentioned, so hopefully I won't take very long. I'd like to speak about the immediacy of the problem for us, the urgency of the problem. I heard a neighbor the other day say, "The commissioners just don't understand how important this is." And I thought, well, how would they? We have to tell them. That's what these public forums are for. It is an immediate issue, and it's one for every resident, every homeowner, not just the people who live where the smell is the worst. I was already in Union County for 27 years in another home before we moved to this, our retirement home. We were in a very large community, and when our home sold, the appraiser deemed us pretty heavily for something that was situated on the opposite end of this very large neighborhood. And when we complained, they said, "You're in that neighborhood, that's the neighborhood problem." Our home values are being heard right now by what you just heard. Because for one thing, the longer a home sits on the market, the less it sells for. And in a time when, I looked it up today, days on market for homes in Union County are much much lower than they were last month. We're getting right into the biggest home buying season, and yet homes for sale in Heritage are just sitting there. They're not being shown. I mean, this is evidence that this problem is because of the disclosure that was mentioned and that problem of the sewer smell. So you've got the problem that people can't have the quiet enjoyment of their property they're entitled to, but also that our property values are going down before our very eyes. We live in a 55 and over neighborhood. I mean, look at us. We're mostly retirees. My wife and I felt that this home is going to be our last home. I didn't mean to get maudlin, and I'm okay, I'm not going to fall over or anything. But it's true, and like most Americans, this is our largest asset, and we're sitting there watching it go down in value. And why? It's not the neighborhood, it's a great neighborhood. It's not the homes, they're great homes. It's because of the county's water and sewer problem. Now, I personally don't think you could have really foreseen that this was going to be what it is. But we know it now. And please don't think this is something that, ah, it'll all even out later on. It is hurting us financially now, and we're living on a budget, so we can't afford it. Please realize the urgency of the issue. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Teri Asad.
Yes, my name is Teri Asad. I live in Union County on Curling Creek. Also, to talk about the situation with our gas, our smells, adjust some of this because a lot of stuff's already been said, but I guess I'll just ask you folks to do the right thing. The gas emission has been known for years. I've lived here in four years, we've been going through this battle, and we're still in the same place as we were four years ago. This could be a health issue. It's definitely a quality of life issue, that if you are out there in the backyard washing a car, anything, and that smell comes up, it's very offensive. What would you do? I am not going anywhere. We are not going anywhere. And as other people have said, there's nothing off the table, these are not made to be a threat, but what would you do in our situation? If we've gone through the channels, we've tried to play nice, if we have to go state, federal agencies, TV, social media, we're prepared to do that. I mean, it's not worth that effort, but we have to because we've got no other choice. I promise you I will do what I need to do to protect my home and investment, as you would do the same thing. Do the right thing and fix it long-term for all of us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Castle.
You have to bear with me, my voice is little. My name is Carol Castle, and I'm probably the oldest resident in Heritage. I live at 1140 Curling Creek Drive. This board is well aware that there are several serious issues with the odor emitting from the manholes on Curling Creek Drive. No longer can you guys point the finger to the developer. You were well aware of the need for another facility before this development. The fact is concerned by the board approval and purchase of land for this purpose. Union County not only encourages, but also promotes, the growth that is taking place. With that being said, when a planned community is approved, as Heritage was, it is the moral and legal obligation for Union County to provide safe and effective infrastructure. I purchased my home in good faith, assuming that said infrastructure was in place. The completion of the recent study did in fact confirm that gases being released were way too high. One has to question, what are the long-term effects for those of us who are breathing these fumes? Your Band-Aid of applying filters only is unacceptable. This problem requires stitches, not Band-Aids. The recommendation of the chemical treatment along with filters is also a Band-Aid, but one that might be a step in the right direction. The only true fix to close this wound is to build a facility on the land that you have already purchased to eliminate and to handle the water and sewer problems of Union County. For Union County to continue to thrive and grow in a healthy environment, it is imperative that this board and future boards provide safe, healthy, and effective infrastructure. I would like to remind you, this board, that you acted pretty quickly to remove fluoride from drinking water to perhaps protect children from perceived long-term health cares. Where is your concern for the long-term health issues that can arise in a 55 and older community? I'm 82 years old. I bought my house to live the rest of my life, and I don't have time to regroup your lack of taking care of this issue and losing what I worked all my life for. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Malden.
Hi. Thank you guys once again for hearing all of us and for taking our concerns to matter. My name is Michelle Malden. I am a resident of Union County, and I also am a resident of the Heritage South Subdivision. My husband and I moved to Union County, never thinking we would move from our home of 28 years in Cabarrus County. But in the last four years, we've grown to really love the area, and we love our home. We have, however, been plagued with the odor issues that are emitted from the sewage lines during this timeframe. It is a matter that is of great importance to our community, and we have been searching for answers and resolution for four years. During this process, we learned that the leaders of this county were aware of the potential problems years ago, when they spent over $4 million to purchase land for a new pump station, as the old one, which we're still operating from, would not handle the county's growth. We continue to request that the matter be kept on the forefront of your planning meetings and in your budget. Many of the residents from Heritage South, as you can tell today, have been attending these meetings every month, and many have gotten up to speak with regards to our concerns. Although we hope that our voices are being heard, one neighbor recently said that while speaking, no one appeared to be interested in the speaker, nor making, even making eye contact. It is my hopes that we truly are being heard, and I thought that I would tell you just a little bit about our neighborhood. Heritage South is not a big fancy entrance that boasts its name. Heritage South is not streets, and it is not houses. Heritage House is not the sewage and water lines. Heritage South is the residents, all of these people that are here tonight, and then some. By definition, Heritage South is an active 55 community. However, we are not just a group of 55 and older adults who are showing up at county board meetings. Our residents consist of doctors, nurses, engineers, electricians, IT professionals, and accountants, dental hygienists, interior designers, realtors, contractors, educators, and business owners, and that's just to mention a few. Some of these are retired, while many are still working in these professions. We are parents, we are grandparents. We enjoy golf, we enjoy swimming, pickleball, beach trips, mountain trips, RV getaways. We enjoy being outside gardening or just visiting with our friends. We are supporters of local small businesses. We are taxpayers, and we are voters. And we are very persistent in our pursuit to seek solutions to the matters concerning our community. Heritage South is a group of Union County residents who are putting our trust in you, this board. We listen to our concerns, and more importantly, make decisions that will permanently fix the odor issue for us, as well as for future residents of this county that we all call home. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Indian Trail Mayor David Cone.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, my name is David Cone, I'm the mayor of Indian Trail. Tonight, I'm here with members of Morse Park Neighborhood to speak about their desire to have clean and safe water. As you know, the town of Indian Trail has a long history of partnering, being a partner with Union County. You know our partnership with the sheriff's office, which goes back 20 years and more. Recently, in the last few years, we have purchased $4.3 million with fire trucks. We are providing funding for the 74 bus and the urban forester. We are sharing funding for a new water line along Indian Trail Road in the Emerald Lakes Neighborhood. To my knowledge, no other community in the county has contributed to this level in Union County. On August 23rd, 2023, residents from the Morse Park Community came to our town council seeking our assistance in their efforts to obtain county water service. There are several homes where the wells have tested above the acceptable level of arsenic for human consumption. Other wells that are tested have high levels of iron, sodium, lead, and various forms of bacteria that make the water unacceptable for human consumption. The electric wells are also affected when there are power outages. Morse Park is surrounded by Union County water lines that are in Colton Ridge Subdivision, Brandon Oaks Subdivision, and on Pioneer Lane. It is estimated that it would be about one mile in length to extend the water lines in the neighborhood. This effort would also facilitate the installation of fire hydrants and address several issues, including health risks, property transfers, power outages, and increased insurance cost. On September 26th, the town council voted to allocate $27,141, which was the estimate cost of 50% of the design cost. FY24 funds were used to fund this request, sharing the design cost with the same arrangement that we have with the Emerald Lakes, excuse me, Emerald Woods Project. It was our understanding that this matter would be taken up this fiscal year, and we have recently learned that the matter will not be taken up until FY25. If the design commitment will not begin until FY25, our town council would need to reprogram the FY24 funds and allocate new funds for the design to be used in FY25. As you know, water projects take a long time, from design to construction and activation. Each day, I'm concerned about the impact that this has on Morse Park. It is our hope that the county will make this project a priority to allow our residents and your residents, members of the Morse Park Community, the ability to obtain safe and dependable water. I know each and a lot of you up here, and I see the concern on your faces of the things and problems that Indian Trail have. And I know you have always tried to do the right thing, and I know you will again. So thank you very much for letting me come up here and speak. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Edwin Ehlum.
Edwin Ehlum, Waxahaw, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, to the Commissioners, to Ms. West, to the County Manager, to our Isley brother, and above all, to all the citizens. Citizens want to know if the majority of this board ever provided an update and correction for the improper billing allocation of the water and sewer charges for Union County residents. I get a lot of calls. People expect results. A few months ago, this board met and discussed the STANTEC report and how the cost to serve each and every respective water and sewer portion was off, and the sewer customers were being overcharged, and the water customers were being undercharged. Several voters, taxpayers, don't recall seeing anything after that meeting. Was there ever a rate correction? Businesspeople are calling and asking. Are the sewer customers still being overcharged? Some want to know. Several people not here tonight are upset. Sewer customers are subsidizing the water-only customers. Can the majority of this board make a decision on that? Where is the transparency of this money collected from taxpayers? Collecting an error in billing, that's a serious matter. First, there was a water and sewer issue, now there is not. Can you explain this? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jen Sanders.
Good evening, Board. Well, I was supposed to be at a PTA event tonight, but this was more important. Our teachers are more important. So I've actually been a room mom for the past nine years. Every year that my kids have been in school, I've been a PTA member, from at-large to vice president. Not a treasure, that's not my thing. So I just want to share that because I'm involved in the schools, I'm in the schools every day, I hear from the teachers. So for me, I wanted to first say thank you for putting the bonds on the ballot for next year. That's really important, let the citizens decide what's important for their school and their children and their future. So I just wanted to put out a couple numbers to you. There were 218 vacancies in the last three months for UCS. Those teachers are leaving our schools, and that was just a three-month count. What is going to happen in two weeks, on June 7th, when the school year is out? We're going to have a mass exodus of teachers. And part of the reason is because our legislators in Raleigh are actually defunding public education. They just, two weeks ago, took out another $625 million from the education fund to fund vouchers. We all know there are 18 schools in Union County that have voucher privileges, and 17 of them are Christian churches that hold that money. Two of them here in Monroe make over $3 million a year out of voucher money. That could be going back to UCS. Okay? I'd also like to remind everyone that we have to fight for public education, and that your elected officials, as all elected officials are, your job is to speak for your constituents. And we are asking you to speak to our elected officials here in Union County and above to fund public education, to stop taking money out of our budget to put them in vouchers. We will not have public education if we continue to take the money out of the pot. Last, I might have just mentioned the $625 million. That's just for next year they're taking out. In the next two years, they're taking close to $1 billion out of public education for the voucher program. I cannot, I cannot stress that enough, how important it is to educate everyone about that. So while we're asking you to speak to the representatives, we're asking you to also think of our local people here. We have water issues, we have all kinds of things happening, taxes need to be raised, unfortunately, but it is part of what happens. If we want great schools, we have to be willing to pay for them. If UCS falls, then what happens? Our tax dollar, our, um, I'm having a brain fart. I apologize. Thank you. Our tax, our house values fall. So it's important that we fund public education, and I would still like that apology. So thank you.
Are there any other persons who wish to speak who haven't signed up, who would like to speak? Hearing done, we'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding adoption of a resolution concerning extension of Wesley Chapel Fire Districts and abolition of Providence Fire Districts. I'll open the public hearing and recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund for comments from county staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is one of the last steps to expand the Wesley Chapel Fire Service Area. And just as a refresher, the town of Weddington requested that the county resume fire protection for the town of Weddington. Currently, they are providing fire service for their residents through a contract with Wesley Chapel. Wesley Chapel also provides fire service for the Providence rural, which is the remaining Providence Fire District that wasn't incorporated into the Weddington Municipal District. So at the March 18th meeting, the board gave direction to move forward with the statutory process to expand that Wesley Chapel District. At the April 1st meeting, you passed the resolution, made a series of findings, we generated a report, developed a map, and we began the process of notifying the residents in that expanded area. We mailed out 9,200 individual notices to those citizens that would be impacted, and tonight, we need to hold a public hearing on that proposal. I will say that of the 9,600 or 9,200 that we sent out, I've received about a half a dozen calls or emails. Most of them were just clarifying. I think there was some concern that this would somehow shut down one of the existing fire fire departments. That is not the case. All of the fire departments will remain open. The service will remain exactly the same. ISO ratings will remain the same, and homeowners insurance will remain the same. So, just to, just to give everyone watching a sense of what this means, what you see on screen right now is the existing Wesley Chapel Fire Service Area. This is the Providence. Again, these are two very small areas, or three very small areas that were left over of Providence that wasn't incorporated into Weddington Municipal. And then, obviously, the wedding, the town limits of Weddington is the Weddington Municipal Fire District. You put all those together, and this would be the proposed fire district that would be served by Wesley Chapel under one unified fire protection area. I will say, there has been a lot of question about tax rates. It does not require a tax rate increase to merge these departments together. Being this time of year as part of the budget, there are requests from Wesley Chapel for personnel, for fire trucks, that may impact that tax rate, but it is not because of this merger. So, I wanted to make that clear. So, with that, I can answer any questions the board has, and if there are none, this is just the opportunity for the public to comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick, thank you very much for opening up this public hearing. One thing that I want to bring up is we've received a few phone calls and a few emails from folks that, that have received communication, you know, regarding this, this change in service. And I want to be clear with everyone that may possibly be affected by this, but, but you will have service. Is that correct, Mr. County Manager, or Mr. Assistant, or Deputy County Manager? Sorry about that.
That's okay. Yes, sir. They will have the exact same service they are receiving now because it'll be the exact same fire department that is responding.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to clarify for everybody. Thank you, Patrick. I want to clarify for everybody, for everyone out there that there's not going to be, you will still be, you're still going to have service through this. There's not going to be a lapse of service. And as I understand it, you know, Wesley Chapel is more than capable of, of service in these areas.
And they're doing so now, so yes, sir. And this will actually help because from a respond standpoint, they have three districts they have to respond to right now. And when you unify that, you take that barrier away. So, it just becomes easier from a dispatch standpoint and a record-keeping standpoint.
Thank you, Patrick. And I'll work on getting your title right next time.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments or questions of the Deputy County Manager? Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing?
No, sir. No one has signed up.
No speakers have signed up for the public hearing. I will now close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is item number 24324, recognition of lifesaver award recipient. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund for this item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's, again, my honor to recognize one of our employees for life-saving efforts. On Tuesday, February 6th, John Helms was eating dinner with his family at a local restaurant. He noticed a man at a nearby booth who was in distress. He rushed over to the man's table and asked the man if he was choking. When the man nodded yes, John began to perform life-saving procedure. It was later determined that the man was not choking, but that he was in a breathing, distressed situation. John continued to provide life-saving efforts until paramedics were able to arrive. It's hard to say, but without John being there, we don't know how this would end. And this, this was not on, this is not part of John's day. This is just something John did as a first responder. It's, it's a privilege of mine to be able to do these fairly often. So, just join me in congratulating John on this achievement.
The next item for consideration is the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Are there any revisions requested to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as published.
All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24346, adoption of a resolution concerning the extension of Wesley Chapel Fire Districts and abolition of Providence Fire Districts. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund for this item.
So, this is the last step in expanding that Wesley Chapel District. If you so choose to adopt this resolution tonight, effective July 1, the Providence District will be abolished, and the Weddington Municipal District will be incorporated into the Wesley Chapel Greater District. So, again, this is the last step in the process of that incorporation.
Any discussion? Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think it's, I think it's appropriate at this point in time that we, that I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to extend the Wesley Chapel Fire and Service, Fire and Rescue Service District, abolish the Providence Fire and Rescue Service District, extend the Wesley Chapel Response District, and abolish the Providence Response District.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The next matter of business is item 24309, rates and fees. I will again, again, recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund concerning this item.
And this is the, this is the last one for me tonight, so this is the last time you have to hear from me. You have a copy of this presentation in front of you, and in the back of that presentation, there's a document with a lot of numbers on it, and they're very small. I did not put that on screen just because it's very, very difficult to read. The point of this presentation is to provide a very brief and high-level overview of some of the rates and fees that are going to be proposed to be changed as part of the fiscal year 25 budget. Many of these rates and fees have not been looked at in a very long time, some in over a decade. And we are, we are trying to get in the habit of reviewing these more often, if not annually, every couple of years, to make sure they are still relevant and effective. You can see the list up there, but the departments that are proposing rate increases or changes this year are Agricultural Services, Building Code Enforcement, Environmental Health, Parks and Rec, Planning, Public Health, the Sheriff's Office, and Solid Waste. We are, we are not going to talk about Water and Sewer, but I did want to mention them in the sense that they are an enterprise. There are a few departments that operate as an enterprise. Water and Sewer and Solid Waste are true enterprises, to where they have their own separate funds, they operate like a business. Building Code operates like, like that. It covers its own costs, but it is part of the general fund, so it's a little bit different than those other two. And then, all of the other departments you hear about are subsidized in some level from the county's general fund. Agricultural Services, they're proposing a couple of changes. One is for the Simpson Event Center. When we opened that center, we, we set rates low intentionally because we wanted the facility to get used, and it has been used. It has become very, very popular, and many of the events they hold are very labor-intensive to set up. So, we, we are proposing an increase in that just to cover some of that additional cost that it takes to set up and break down for those events. Proposed change is the farmer's market. The farmer's market has also become very, very popular over the last couple of years. There's a number of vendors we have now that we didn't have before, and it just takes a lot more effort to put that endeavor on. So, we are proposing to raise those vendor fees a very small amount to help cover the increased cost. Building Code Enforcement, there, there are several changes, as you, as you'll see on that list. But in general, when Building Code looked at these fees, they were 60% of what surrounding communities were charging. So, that is fairly low. And again, Building Code, the goal is for their revenue to sustain their program. And over the last several years, it has, but it's getting very, very closer to not breaking even. So, we feel these rates are needed at this point to continue the health of the Building Code Fund, and they'd still only be at 80% of surrounding communities. So, we feel it's a, it's an increase, but it's fair relative to what other communities are charging around us. Environmental Health are proposing two changes, one for swimming pool inspection and one for onsite water protection. Swimming pools, we have seen a lot more commercial swimming pools, HOAs, hotels, swimming facilities, that sort of thing. These, these inspections are very, very complex, and oftentimes, they require going out multiple times to address issues throughout the process. So, it's just a very labor-intensive process that you don't see for a residential pool. So, they are proposing some increases to that. And then, the onsite water protection program, it's no secret that soil in Union County is very, very poor for, for septic systems. And again, it takes a lot of effort to find sites suitable for septic systems for residents. So, this would address some of that additional workload that's required. Parks and Rec, they've only adjusted rates once in the last 10 years. They did a pretty comprehensive review this year. Couple of the highlights, they, we have a senior annual pass that seniors can sign up for. It's $5. They can come use the park. $5 does not generate a lot of revenue. So, we said, we want the seniors to get out. We want them to be as active as they can. Let's remove that barrier. So, this would allow seniors to use the parks for free. It would implement a out-of-county senior rate of $5 for any seniors from other communities that want to come in and use our parks, that they could purchase an annual pass. It also simplifies some of the athletic field rentals. We have a pretty complex structure on how many games, what type of games they are, if they're practices and games, and we've eliminated some of that because it's just very confusing to, to communicate to some of these athletic organizations. They simplified it down to just an hourly rate for use of the fields. Planning and zoning, planning and zoning has a, a single fee for conditional rezonings right now. So, it could be 100, it could be 1,000. They don't, they don't charge anything different. And what they have found is that the effort required from staff for a 1,000-unit subdivision as opposed to 100-unit is much greater. So, this would set a tiered system for those conditional zonings based on either dwelling unit or gross square footage. So, smaller, smaller subdivisions would pay a smaller fee, larger subdivisions would pay a, a larger fee. Public Health, Public Health is proposing a 5% increase to all dental services. Aware of the community we are trying to serve with these, with these clinical fees, we don't want to raise them too high, but we do think this will help cover the cost of providing those services. There's also some new fees for a pilot program that we're doing with pediatric behavioral health. Those fees do not exist right now, so they will be included in the proposed budget. And then, we have several clinical fees that are below the Medicaid reimbursement rate. So, if they're below the Medicaid reimbursement rate, we can't collect the full amount. So, setting these fractionally above that Medicaid rate ensures we get as much revenue back from Medicaid as we can. The Sheriff's Office, they are proposing some photocopy fees and staff fees for some of their large public information requests. This would not apply for police reports or simple requests, but a number of their requests require multiple 40 hours to comply with. The law does allow for them to set a reasonable fee to produce some of those documents. And again, some of these requests take weeks to produce. So, this is just for those one or two a year that are really labor-intensive for staff over there to be able to recover some of those costs. And then, solid waste. At the February retreat, we did a comprehensive overview to the board on solid waste fees. And at the time, we had proposed some, some increases at that time. And the board said, with our limited capacity, our construction and demolition landfill, and how, how reasonable our municipal solid waste site is, we wanted to look at possibly increasing them beyond what they were just to ensure that we do have that capacity long-term. So, what is being proposed is a $2 increase to the tonnage, the tier-one tonnage for municipal solid waste and construction and demolition. We feel that that is, it's reasonable, it's still competitive in the area, but it will hopefully try to prevent some of the overuse we may be seeing. So, that is all I have. Most of the directors from these departments are in the room tonight if you have specific questions. Again, this wasn't meant to be a deep dive. We just wanted to highlight some of this. It will be part of the 25 budget presentation, but I can answer any questions you may have right now. Sounds good. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item 24308, the fiscal year 2024, third quarter revenue and expense projections. I will recognize Blake Hart, Budget Management Director, for this item.
Great. All right. Thank you, Chairman Ral, members of the County Commission. It's my honor to stand here before you today and share some information regarding my best projection for our, the end-of-year collections for our budget and expenses. This is a follow-up to the presentation that, that you received back at the board retreat in, in February at the hospital. The one that I shared at that point was through the mid-year, and this one is through the third quarter or the end of March. This is the, the highlight here on the first slide. It shows that my, according to my best estimation, we should, in the general fund, and with the total revenues of 218.78 million and total expenses of 217.2 million, that would give us a final position of revenue over expenses of $1.5 million, which is 0.7% of total expenses in the general fund. Going back to the presentation at the mid-year, this is, this is a bit better than we had, than I shared at that point. There are a few points of positivity that caused me to increase the projection a bit, still within the, the margin of error, less than 1%, but I think the position is a little bit better now, and hopefully, it'll be trending better through the next six weeks till the end of fiscal year. The points that show there's, the position is improving somewhat are increased ad valorem revenue, increased investment revenue, and positive impacts from the hiring freeze that the manager implemented shortly after our, the board retreat back in February. This slide shows the county revenues in the general fund by category. If you look over to the right, you'll see that this shows the revised budget, actuals to date through March 31st, the year-end projection change, the expected change, and percent, the projected percent collection. And what you'll see is for ad valorem collections, we're, we're seeing very positive signs in collections of ad valorem revenues. I'm projecting we'll collect between 106 and 107% of the total budget for ad valorem. If you remember, we, in the FY24 budget, we used a growth figure of 4.5%, which was historically high during, during my six-year tenure here. And what we're seeing here is that was a little bit low compared to the actual growth that we're seeing here in the county. Now, the positive signs of that, or the positive impact of that is it's offsetting the shortfall in sales tax. You can see that we're expecting to collect between 7.5 and 8 million dollars in sales tax in the general fund. This is an impact that is, that is not unique to us in Union County. This is every county, every city, every town in North Carolina and across the nation also. The, the shortfall there is being offset somewhat by ad valorem. And this is, I, I think the, the message here is that although it is a decrease from where we have been in recent years during COVID, it has stabilized. So, it's not dropping any further. It is stable now and kind of leveled off from the, the drop that we saw that this time last year. The, there's some shortfall there also in intergovernmental revenue, which is a revenue we get from the state linked to sales tax regarding Medicaid Hold Harmless. And then, investment revenue is trending up in 2023. And again, that's the, that's the silver lining of the dark cloud of interest rates being at a historic high when we have, we have funds invested in the market. When interest rates are high, we collect more on that revenue, while personally, it's a little more detrimental to, to folks. But there, there are higher rates or higher collections coming from investments that we have. This is a slide that shows, hones in on some, on sales tax over the past five or six years. If you look to the far right, you'll see that the amount collected compared to budget, going back several years, was around 100%, a little bit lower. And then, during the, the pandemic years, when there was lots of federal funding coming through, the percent collection of sales tax increased quite a bit. And now, we, we climbed that hill, and we're coming back down. I think a, a good term is this is the stabilizing year for sales tax to help us level off and grow at a more historic rate going forward. The third quarter projection indicates that we would collect again around 87, 88%. And the portion that we would affect, that would affect the general fund is a decrease of between 7 and 8 million dollars. And just a reminder that there's a piece that are also in the education debt fund. That's about 2.5 million that we're expecting to undercollect there together. That would be about $10 million in undercollections. And fortunately, we're seeing that, that, that will be offset by some other revenues that are trending above budget. revenues that are trending above budget. This chart shows a history of collections by month, going back to FY23. I just wanted to show you kind of historically, the orange line at the top represents the actual collections. The blue line represents budget. So if you go back to FY23, you can see that consistently we were collecting above budget month over month. And then about this time last year, that inverted to where our collections did below budget. And we've continued that trend to date, and we expect that we will finish in a similar fashion through the end of this And, but, but again, I think we've leveled off, and so we're, we're able to manage the position where we are now with sales tax. Looking at expenses, again, this is the same, a mirror of the chart that I showed you earlier from revenues. It shows expenses. Our largest expense is employee compensation. If you look over to the right, you'll see that I'm projecting that we would spend 97.8% of the employee compensation budget and about 98% of employee benefits. There's some, that's a little bit higher than what we normally see, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, we, we try to be proactive and maximize the lap salary amount that the county has in the general fund to use some towards the phase-one and class compensation adjustments. And also, there's been some savings there from the hiring freeze that was implemented by the county manager shortly after the budget retreat in February, to preserve those funds through the end of this, end of this year to help us to hopefully increase revenues and decrease expenses where we could to make sure that we, in the year, in a positive, positive position. The, again, the operating budget spending is in line with regular trends, and the contracts, grants, and subsidies are made up of payments that we make to EMS, our business grants, and business partners. And so we are, we're spending within historic ranges, given, given where we are at this point. This is revenue over expenses, and if you look to the column on the right, you'll see that as a whole, I'm projecting that our revenues will be collected at 97.2% through the end of the year, and our expenses will be spent at 96.5%, leaving us with a margin of 0.7% of the total budget and a buffer of about $1.5 million. Again, that's up from about $700,000, which is, was the buffering amount that I shared back in February. So I, I feel like things are improving. But again, it's still, it's less than 1%, so it's still within the margin of error. But I think that we are seeing some positive signs to get us through the end of the fiscal year, which is as hard as it is believe only six weeks away. The final takeaway, the important points I want you to take away from this presentation are that ad valorem revenue is strong and growing. Sales tax revenue has stabilized after the volatile post-COVID period, and I expect that we'll, we will return to historic normal rates of growth, 2% to 3% year-over-year. County expense is trending within normal historic ranges. The manager's cost-saving strategy was effective, in my opinion, which was the hiring freeze. And current projections indicate a small margin of revenue over expense at year-end of about $1 million and a half dollars, or 0.7% of the general fund. And projection indicates a small positive margin of less than 1%. And the expected budget, expected final budget position is slightly better than at mid-year. And again, these are my best estimates based on history, based on trends, and based on my experience and knowledge of the Union County budget. That's all that I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer or respond to you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Our next matter of business is item 24277, the capital improvement plan, recommended funding for year 2025. I will recognize Beverly Law's Finance Director concerning this item.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. This afternoon, we wanted to go over our capital funding strategy for the fiscal year 25, county's manager's recommended budget, as well as touch on the long-term CIP plan that we update annually as well. And to begin with, I wanted to just remind you of the methodology that we use when we actually are putting together our capital improvement plan. We use the government finance officers' associations' best practices and guidelines. This is a national government finance officers' association that we look to when we're putting best practices into place. Part of the capital planning best practices is that you have a capital plan and policy, which you do. As the Board of County Commissioners, you have adopted a policy that indicates that we would review the capital plan each year and update that as necessary based on your direction and goals at the time. We also use master planning and comprehensive plans. If you'll recall, recently, we went through a study of our facilities to determine our space needs. That was used in putting together the multi-year capital plan that you'll be presented tonight. And we also use capital asset management tools and priorities and scoring. Chris Boyd and the facilities teams really do a great job putting this together to help determine what of our facilities and infrastructure is really in need of repair or replacement. And then we also want to make sure that we are communicating those capital improvement strategies out to not only you as the board, but also our citizens for transparency. So to begin with, we'll look at our long-term capital plan. This shows you our high-level plans for FY25 through FY20. The majority of the items that you see on here for counties, facilities, public safety, 911 communications, information technology, and DOT projects are really reoccurring dollars that we put back into our current infrastructure that we have each year. The thing that we focus on most of the time is our major projects. This is what really drives the, the major calls for our capital plan, as well as things that take a lot more time to plan with you as a board and to get your direction and priorities. So we're going to focus just on the major projects for the FY25, 2030 plan, and not go through the individual reoccurring capital dollars. So if you'll recall at your retreat in February, we actually presented this plan to you as well. The one change that we did make to this from that retreat is based on your direction for the jail cost. We did remove that from the long-term plan until some studies are done, and we can come back with updated capital planning numbers for that project. So for FY25, the really, the big major project that we've talked about already with you as a board is the judicial center and government center renovation project. Part of that funding strategy we discussed at the last meeting was to issue 2/3 bonds for the construction of that project. In addition to that for 25, we are really focusing on some other smaller projects that are of the top priority of our facilities team, which is providing lighting for Jesse Helms Park, rooftop replacements at the current jail, and ADA improvements at Parks and Recreation. In the out-years in fiscal year 26 through 2030, the major factor driving the cost for that is a possible school administration building, as well as the progress building Phase II improvements, and agriculture center office and support expansion. Of course, we would bring those decisions back to you as we do those fiscal year budget preparations and throughout your retreat and workshops. So now we'll focus on what we're actually recommending for funding for fiscal year 25. For the general county facilities capital projects, the recommended funding is $5,070,000. And we break these down into the buckets of funding sources and how those projects actually fall. So for major capital, as I mentioned earlier, it's $1,115,000. This is focusing on Jesse Helms Park lighting to light up the park so it can actually be used later in the evenings for soccer fields and things of that nature. We also have ADA improvements that are needed at our parks for $350,000, as well as the jail rooftop HVAC system replacement at the current existing jail. For the critical infrastructure needs that have been identified, it's a total of $1,230,000. This would help purchase a generator at the progress building, and also to create three fueling stations within the county at different facilities for $275,000. This is ongoing funding as well for the uninterruptible power supply upgrades and replacements. We've been replacing these over the past three fiscal years, and this is the third year of funding for that, for $80,000. And also focusing on our security system upgrades for the safety of our buildings and our employees for $350,000. And then we have the bucket for the annual operating R&amp;R funding. This really helps maintain our current existing infrastructure. For our general county facilities, we are requesting funding for $1,525,000. For Union County Sheriff's Office facilities, $500,000 in ongoing maintenance and repairs. And Parks and Recreation, ongoing operating repair and renovation of $300,000. And I will stop now and ask if you have any questions about this funding before we move forward.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Beverly, going back to the fueling stations, three locations, is that for electric vehicles or what is that for? Can you, can you explain that?
It's actually for fuel, but I would-
Okay. Thank you.
It's really for emergency fuel supply for both diesel and gasoline. Over the last few years, we've seen some shortages with the pipeline disruption, and we just, we'd like to know that we have a supply locally if something were to happen.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Beverly and maybe Patrick, the Jesse Helms Park lighting item here under major capital, have we had folks approach us requesting to use that for soccer fields? I mean, what's, what's driving that?
Yeah, we have. From both youth athletics and winget intermurals, they feel like they could use it almost every night of the week if it was available. So we have seen a lot of interest from various groups about using it after, after hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we'll talk about public safety funding. We provide funding for three different buckets of public safety departments. That is our E911 communications county department. We also provide capital funding for Union EMS and for our volunteer fire districts. Total funding that we are recommending for public safety in FY25 is $2,751,212. For E911 communications, this is really an ongoing reoccurring cost for radio replacements and maintenance each year for $150,000. For Union EMS, their request is $2,69212. This is for purchases of ambulances and remounts, some support vehicles, technology needs, and cardiac monitors. For our volunteer fire departments, this is for the air packs. This is a continuation of funding that we provide each year to really replace those air packs as they are going out of their lifecycle. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have about the public safety capital funding needs. And then really, two projects that kind of fit in the other category for capital is the NCDOT critical infrastructure, I mean, intersection projects for $300,000, and then our ongoing information technology cloud migration for $120,000. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about these two projects if you have any. So if there are no questions about those, so, you know, the question is, how are we going to pay for all of this? So for our general county facility capital projects, we are recommending that we use general fund unassigned fund balance of around $1.4 million. We are also recommending for a funding strategy, the reassignment of PEGO funding that is currently available in our CIP fund for around $3.6 million. For our public safety departments, we are recommending that we actually request Union EMS to use some of their fund balance of $887,000. We have a contract in place with Union EMS that states if they have anything over $500,000 in their unrestricted fund balance, that that will be reused for capital items or returned to the county. So we're really going to be requesting that they pay for that on their books and not on the county books. And in addition to that, we would use general, general fund unassigned fund balance for around $1.8 million. For our other capital projects, we are recommending to use general fund unassigned fund balance of around $420,000. So in total, what you would see in the recommended budget, the transfer over to capital would be using around $3.7 million of current unassigned fund balance to help fund our capital infrastructure needs. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the funding sources before we move on. So also, in our recommended budget, we include capital infrastructure needs for South Piedmont Community College, as well as Union County Public Schools. In the recommended budget, you will see funding for South Piedmont Community College for $390,900. This is a slight increase from their current year funding. We currently fund them at $375,000. And this recommended funding actually recognizes the growth in their ad valorem rate within the education operating fund for South Piedmont. They use this funding for repair and replacement maintenance projects, as well as their technology needs and their HVAC needs. And for Union County Public Schools, as part of the superintendent's recommended budget and adopted by their board at their last meeting, their total capital funding request is around, around $20 million. It's $19,958.05. This is a little bit less than what we actually funded their capital in FY24. So that is a slight decrease. So they would actually recognize additional growth in their operating cost in their requested budget for FY25 versus in capital. And in order to pay for this, our recommended funding sources is $19,335,000 in the base budget. And then there are also state public school building R&amp;R funds that are available for us to draw down from the state for fiscal year 25 for $500,000. This funding can only be spent on actual renovation needs, classroom needs, and it cannot be used for athletic facilities or paving, things of that nature. So we will work with the schools to determine exactly what capital projects that money would be spent on during FY25. We also have sales tax refund that we have received from the prior bond projects. As we're paying for those construction costs, we are able to get reimbursed from the state for sales tax, just as we are for county construction projects. And in the past year, we received $115,730 that would be used as a funding source to fund their full capital request. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the education capital before we move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Beverly, just a real quick question regarding safety and security, this line here. Can you give us a little bit of reference about what this would include?
I do not have the exact detail with me because they send a whole itemized list, but I can get that to you and provide it to you.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So if there's no further questions, last and not least is, we also work with the solid waste team to work on their capital improvement plan. And in FY25, we would be recommending funding for a landfill operations center. You can see here, this picture is their current operations center that they've been operating out of for many, many years. And as you can imagine, it's not of the best quality. So we are recommending $1.4 million in solid waste funding for their capital needs in the FY25 budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Just, just real quick, sorry, Beverly. This existing facility there, do we have a reference as to how long that building's been there? I'm just curious.
Okay. A long, long time.
I would venture to say 30 years or more.
Early 70s, maybe. Early 70s, maybe.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
And how many employees are working in this, this location?
Probably like 40.
Forty?
In and out of it.
Mr. Chairman. What's the existing square footage of this building that we're looking at?
700 feet, 400 feet.
Thank you.
So if there's no further questions, just to let you know, the next steps in our capital planning for fiscal year 25 is that you would adopt the budget ordinance on June the 17th, which will approve the funding to transfer to our capital improvement funds. And then we would bring back to you in July, all of the capital project ordinances for each individual project for adoption. And then looking back at our long-term plan, we would follow back up for some updates and workshops during fiscal year 2026 and beyond, since we are required to update that plan annually. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. The next matter of business is item twenty-four, three nineteen, appointments to the Union County Broadband Committee. The board established this committee on March fourth. The positions on this committee have been advertised, applications have been received, and staff has provided its recommendations for appointments in the information for this item agenda, or agenda item, excuse me. Are there nominations to fill these positions?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve these individuals, and that would include the seven that staff has recommended. So we have Alan Balkum, Stephen Dugan, James Hill, Kendall Latham, Robert Mullis, Autumn Solomon, and Hank Gamber, is that, am I saying that correctly? Gamber.
Good thinking, Mr. Vice Chair. Any discussion on the nominations? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye. Next on the agenda is item twenty-four, three twenty-eight, short water line extension program update. I'll recognize Thomas Mann, CIP Program Manager concerning this item.
Evening Commissioners, again, Thomas Mann here presenting in Alina Billiot's place. She's our short water line program manager, currently out on maternity leave. Happy to report mom and baby are doing great and look forward to having her back in July. So you guys will probably be seeing more of her in the future. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the history of the short water line program, and then the county manager's going to have some comments towards the end of the presentation on, on what we may be looking at for, for future programs. So, jumping right in, the history of the short line program dates back to two thousand, and we've had four versions of that program. The first couple of versions of it were, were known as the self-help program, and we'll get into a little more of the details on what they consisted of. And then in two thousand and twelve, we transitioned to, to what is now known as the short water line program. We had two versions of that program. We had a ten years as a first come, first served signup program, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that entailed. And then the last couple of years, we did a priority ranking program where projects were scored based on a set of criteria, and projects with the most points were the ones recommended for us to move forward with. So on the self-help program, I'm not going to go through each of these line items, but this is just to give you an overall overview. I'll, I'll highlight a couple of the key components to discuss. So both the self-help program and the modified self-help program were a first come, first served signup basis, similar to the first version of the short water line program. One key difference between the two versions is the, the original self-help program did not have a participation requirement, whereas the, the modified self-help program required a seventy percent participation for the extension to move forward. In both instances, the, the water department provided the, the engineering and permitting for the projects, but on the construction side, there was a little bit of a difference. The applicants procured the contractor on the, the original self-help program. County had to approve who that contractor was. On the modified self-help program, the, the county procured the contractor. The structure of the, the finance, financial piece of the two programs varied, very much so. On the original program, the county would contribute up to fifty thousand dollars in materials for the project, and the applicants covered the, the cost of the, the labor of the construction and any material costs that exceeded fifty thousand dollars. On the, the modified self-help program, the county contributed forty-two hundred dollars per applicant towards the project, with the remaining balance being covered by the applicants. Got some details here on the, kind of the statistics of, of how many folks were served by this program. We ended up with about three hundred applicants that were served over that eleven-year period and ended up investing not quite ten, excuse me, constructing about ten miles of, of pipeline and invested about one point two million dollars in the two programs combined, so. Here's just a map to kind of give you a general idea of where those projects occurred. So you've got four projects that were the original self-help program. Those are the dots in red. And then you've got seven projects that were the modified self-help program in blue. You'll see some of them are kind of clustered together. In some instances, we, so just to give you a visual representation of where these projects occurred. Moving on to the, the short water line program, as, as we noted, we, we've had two versions of that program from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty-one. We had the first come, first serve program, and then again, the, the last couple of years, we've had the priority ranking program. One major difference between these two, two programs has been how folks apply. So the original program, come July one, we had a one-day application signup, first come, first served. Folks came, got in line. It was somewhat similar to, to folks waiting in line on Black Friday, on, on the Friday after Thanksgiving. So probably not ideal for the applicants or staff in trying to manage that, that process. The last couple of years with priority ranking, folks have had a ninety-day window that they could apply, and, and no, no preference was given to a person that, that applied the first day versus a person that applied the last day. Once the application period ended, all the projects were looked at and scored based on the same set of criteria. The, the original short line program did carry a backlog, so oftentimes, we would have more demand than we had funding available, and so folks would sign up and they would remain on the list until their project was gotten to on the list based on available funding. Whereas with the current program, we do not have a backlog. So if you apply and your program is not selected, then you have to reapply the following year. There are no costs associated with that application. We have required well testing, but the, the results from one year can be applied to the next year, so you don't have to have your well retested. There's, there's no additional cost, and where you fall out in the rankings is dictated by who else applies for the program. So one year, you could be really close, and the next year, you could be selected, or you could be much further down the list, depending on how your project scored compared to other projects. On the, the, the distance of per applicant, the original program did have a thousand feet per applicant limit, up to six thousand feet total. So the county would fund the first six thousand feet if you had six applicants. Anything beyond that would have been the responsibility of the applicants participating. The current program does not have a, a footage limit per se, but we have to look at water age, water quality in the system. And so based on the, the AWA recommendation of fourteen-day water age and using some, some assumptions on the, the average daily demand based on the historical records we have for our residential customers, it comes out to where it's not quite seventeen hundred and fifty feet of pipe. What we have seen from the, the two years of the program is we're averaging about seven hundred and fifty feet per selected applicant. So we, we've not had an instance where generally the, the total footage exceeds the, the prior thousand feet per applicant. The fee structure's a little different. On the, the original short line program, applicants paid the tap fee and meter fee, which was five hundred and eighty-five dollars at the time. Currently, applicants pay, they, they pay the meter fee, but they also pay a cost share fee, which is based on a sliding scale, based on some economic factors for the utility. To date, with the, the first two years of, of this version of the program, we've had about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in applicant fees between the, the cost share fee and the meter fee, and that represents about three percent of the overall investment in the, in the projects that have, that have been selected. From a funding standpoint, the first, what, seven, eight years of the original short line program, five hundred thousand dollars was allocated on an annual basis for, for projects. It's not cheap to put in water lines, and so what we found is there was much greater demand from applicants than we had funding available. So we created a lengthy backlog list of projects that took time to get to. Subsequently, for twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the board allocated five million dollars per year to see if we could do all the projects on the backlog and, and then reevaluate the, the program going forward, and that's, that's what we have done. So the current program, again, there has been a, a five million dollar allocation in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. A couple of other key things I'll point out here on this slide is the, for the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three projects, those have not bid yet, so that cost per linear foot is, is strictly an estimate. The, the cost will ultimately be what the cost is once we're able to, to bid the projects and start construction. Again, here is a, a map showing where all the projects are. Lots of colors on here. It looks like maybe somebody took a paintball gun to the map, but again, just want to give you a general idea of where the projects were located and, and what years the projects were done. Similar to the, the self-help program, you may see a lot of dots clustered together. In those instances, we had multiple projects within a single neighborhood where maybe one street applied one year, then a couple of years later, another street in the same neighborhood came in and also applied. So that's why you'll see some of that clustering. Getting into a little more of the details, I'm not going to run through all of these numbers. I will highlight a couple of the totals at the bottom and then note a couple of trends. So before I get into the totals, you'll see four years there from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and nineteen are highlighted in red. The reason that is, is the, the engineering for those years of the program were actually done in-house by water department staff. So that did result in a significant savings for the program of about twenty percent roughly is, is what typical engineering costs are for a project. You know, we were able to accomplish that due to the, a little bit of a limited scale of those projects. If you look at the, the years since, the, the, the scale of the projects have been significantly larger, something that we wouldn't be able to do in-house with our, our current staffing. The last two years, the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, in a, a pinkish color, those are highlighted because again, that the costs associated with those are simply an estimate. We're still in the design process on both of those years, so we do not have hard-bid numbers at this time. But in summary, on the totals, we've done not quite fifty miles of pipeline installation since two thousand and thirteen, served about four hundred and fifty applicants with the program, a little over a hundred projects, and not quite twenty-three million dollars have been invested to, to extend water lines as part of the short line program. So in summary, we've had twenty-four years essentially of, of some sort of water line extension program. There's been four different versions of the program. We've, we've been able to serve about seven hundred and fifty applicants, not quite sixty miles of, of water line. We've invested twenty-four million dollars. But then a couple of key things I do want to point out, so for two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty, we've had about twenty-five percent of the applicants that, that signed up, they paid the initial fees that, that were required, but they have not requested a meter to be set. So there has been no incoming revenue from water usage for those applicants. There's, there's no mechanism in place with the backlog projects to require them to actually ultimately have a meter set. In addition of the, of these projects that have been completed, only about ten percent of folks that were not original applicants have requested service and connected to the system. So typically, those driving factors have been maybe somebody had an issue with their well, whether it was, it was going dry, or they had a, a treatment system on their well to, to deal with constituents such as arsenic manganese, and it failed. So instead of reinvesting in that, they had the opportunity to connect to the county water system. But by and large, we're only seeing folks request service that weren't applicants if they have a motivating factor to do so. Any questions on any of that, I guess, before I hand it over to the county manager? Oh, sorry, I, I did have one more slide, my apologies. So here's just a general summary of kind of where things stand. The, the three back year, backlog projects are, are at the top. The, the first two years are complete. The third one is actively in construction and hope to have it completed by the end of this year. As I mentioned, two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three are in various stages of design with the hopes of being complete with construction in, in fall of two thousand and twenty-five and summer of two thousand and twenty-six. And the two thousand and twenty-four program was not funded as part of the capital program. So now I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Thank you, Thomas. So first off, I want to clarify and make sure everyone is well aware that these are county enterprise funds for the utility. No taxpayers' dollars were funding this program. Oftentimes, there's a confusion that we're using taxpayers' money to fund this project. That is not true. The ratepayers, who are customers of, of the county's water and sewer utility, are the ones who are generating the funds that cover these costs, so I want to make that clear. Also need to talk about and, and get some direction from the board, not necessarily tonight, but certainly in the near future, of what is the future of the short water line program there. There are no funds in the current budget or the recommended budget to continue this program. Now, I, I did mention previously to the board that if we had any savings from our twenty-two, twenty-three program and, and any from two thousand and twenty-one, that we would want to allocate those towards continuing that program. I, I am going to say that based on some of our more recent estimates, we're not confident we will actually have any savings. Those, those costs are relatively high and going up as we speak. So we will certainly know more about that once we bid the projects for twenty-two and twenty-three, but I'm not confident we will actually have any significant funds that are surplus to be able to, to fund that. So from the board's perspective, you know, what are your priorities? Do you want to continue this program? If you do want to continue this program, in what way, in what fashion? As you can see, there's a multiple ways to do it. We've done it several different ways over the last couple of decades. Just to give you an example of if the county said, hey, listen, we want to do a program for two thousand and twenty-five, we want to put five million, and we're only going to do that year, we could fund that with debt. Your rates that you have agreed that you would adopt for the, the water and sewer utility are enough that we could meet our, our bond coverages and we could fund that five million dollars with debt. We would not have cash, we'd actually have to go to the market, issue debt in order to pay for that, that one year. If you were to say, I want to do it for twenty-five and twenty-six, those two years at five million, we'd need at least a quarter percent increase in rates going up from seven point two-five to seven point five percent for at least those two years in order to be able to continue that program for twenty-five and twenty-six. And then beyond, if you wanted the program to go longer, say, twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four, you would have to have a one percent rate increase from seven point two-five to eight point two-five through twenty twenty-eight to be able to fund the debt for that. And I want to, I want to specify that, that's debt. We're not generating enough cash to cash fund these projects. We'll have to pay for them with debt. Just so there's a point of reference, every quarter percent of rate increase only generates an additional fifty thousand dollars in cash to the system. Fifty thousand dollars doesn't go very far. So you, you want a program like this, you're going to have to do debt to do a program like this. You heard earlier from the mayor from Indian Trail talking about Moore's Park. It's important, and the reason why we've not moved forward with anything with Moore's Park is we just don't have any funding for it. And the board will really have to give us some direction on, do you want to participate in that? Even if we are to split that cost, and right now, a general estimate's around a million dollars for that, for that project, could be more, but let's just say it's a million, that's five hundred thousand dollars that we have to come up with. That's going to take you probably a percent and a quarter to be able to cover that by cash, if you were going to be able to pay for that by cash. Or debt, which obviously I would never recommend you pay for that with debt. It's not enough that, that we would really want to do debt with that. That would be cash funded. So just trying to give you a perspective on what we're dealing with as far as trying to continue this program. It is expensive. I think you've seen that, and it, it, the cost per applicant has continued to rise, and that's simply because the cost of providing this is going up every year. Inflation has been high, the cost of, of the actual goods, the, the, the cost of construction has just increased significantly. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but ultimately, I am going to need some direction from the board on, on what the future is for the short line program and, and how you want to handle the Moore Park request from Indian Trail. No need for decision tonight, but certainly available for any. No need for decision tonight, but certainly available for any comments, questions, or any other information.
Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for bringing this to us. I believe I was the one that requested that we take a look at the short line water extension program, and I think that it's very good for us to look at the history of the program and see what this program's accomplished for Union County. I thought that it was very impressive, as we were going along here, I made a note of nearly 60 miles of pipe being installed since 2000. That's a lot of pipe. So, and ultimately, what that means is, is that, you know, that's a big commitment of the county to bring water to the folks that need it. You know, I've been a big supporter of the short line water extension program because I feel like, you know, this is something that our constituents need. I mean, water is something that's a basic necessity. So, you know, with that, I mean, to some degree, I'd like to see this continue. Now, whether or not we look at, you know, $5 million worth of funding or something else, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what that looks like just yet. But I think that, you know, even if it's $1 million, even if it's $500,000, and we only take on one small project here and there, I've got a, at least from my opinion, I'd like to see it continue, at least in some small capacity. You know, you bring up something good here about, well, a good point about Morris Park. I'd like to see some more detailed estimates, too, you know, about what we are looking at with the cost there. I know you said 1 million, and I know that that's just an estimation at this point. I'd like to get some additional information. I think that that's important, we address this need if we can. But again, I wanted to say thank you. I appreciate all the effort made by staff. I thought the presentation was great. And again, kudos to the staff for continuing this project. I think it's a huge accomplishment for Union County.
Didn't we talk about, a few meetings ago, about allocating some money to this program? Was that what you're referring to as far as savings or any leftover? That's the same? Yes, sir. Yeah, that was, it was our hope that we would generate some surplus from what we have in current dollars. However, we're not confident we will now yield much of a surplus. We won't know until we bid those projects, obviously, but based on the construction market, we're just seeing those costs go up and up. We're just not sure we'll have surplus.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion for the county manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Williams. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I thought it was an excellent presentation, and I really appreciated a lot of the historical data that you provided, going all the way back to, what was it, 2012? And I thought it was pretty illustrative, because back then, we started relatively small in terms of what we were spending, and the average cost per applicant was in a much more reasonable range than where we kind of ended up. I noticed we had 28,000 average cost per applicant to the county back, what was it, fiscal year 2020? What was it? I think it was a different slide, maybe?
That's it. 2020, we did, and I think that was the characteristics of that project.
Fiscal year 2020, 28,000 per applicant, and wow, what a difference to 129. Now, that's come down a some, but still, I mean, nearly $72,000 per applicant. And I, you know, I remember, you know, I originally, I think in my very first year, voted to support the short line extension. But I've kind of gradually gotten a little more skeptical of it, and it's because these costs are going up, these average costs per applicant are really going up. And, you know, the lines, there are instances where the lines that we're running are getting longer and longer. And I'm wondering, when we started this program, I think you'd mentioned there was a limit of 1,000 feet that we kind of adopted, and I'm wondering if we do revisit this or maybe rework it, maybe we should revisit limits like that and start small rather than go large with 5 million or more, when we have all these other capital needs that are competing. And, you know, I think, you know, another thing that's important to probably mention is, when these kind of projects or, you know, any initiative really gets started, you look at the low-hanging fruit. You look at the instances where, you know, lines are getting run, you know, for neighborhoods that aren't on water, and they just make, you know, imminently a whole lot of sense, and you can see the efficiencies there. But over time, as these programs continue to get rolling, you know, that low-hanging fruit kind of disappears, and the projects that are applied for get kind of more and more tenuous and more and more stretched in terms of the logic of the case that's before us as a board. And I think that's kind of where we are with this. So, you know, I'm not willing to put a stake through it necessarily, but I'm not far away from it either. I think if we do resurrect this thing, perhaps it ought to be done on a smaller scale, and perhaps we ought to reintroduce some of the, I think, reasonable, sensible limitations that were attached to the program when it started. So that makes a lot of sense to me. You know, in terms of Morris Park, you know, that's a little bit, you know, different of an issue for me. I mean, we've got a municipal partner that's willing to work with us and contribute to the expense of it, and, you know, I've got some ideas on things that we can cut, you know, that maybe will help pay for the county's portion of projects like this. So, you know, that's my two cents. I mean, I think it's, it has been a worthy program, but if we resurrect it, perhaps we ought to significantly change the size and the, some of the requirements of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Williams' comments there. You know, he's definitely not wrong. I mean, the expense has definitely gone up over the years, and I certainly recognize that, and I think that that's actually a good idea, that we, they would look at smaller scale. I think that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't want the program to go away entirely.
Right.
You know, I think that there is a lot of merit to it, but you're right. I mean, we can't ignore the rising cost of it either. So, you know, so to that, I'm certainly open to discussing, you know, some changes that we can make to limit that expense.
Our next matter of business is item 24342, sewer allocation policy. I'll recognize County Manager Brian Matthews concerning this item.
So a little easier for me to come out here and talk to you about this item. This is, the board has been discussing the possibility of establishing a sewer allocation policy for some time. You've tasked staff with giving you something for you to think about, obviously, give us some direction on. We're not seeking a final decision tonight. This is really about giving us, hey, we think you're going in the right direction, give us a nod, or no, we want you to do something different. So that's what this is. It's not really about making any formal decisions, but we do want to go over the allocation methodology and the policy. So I want to talk first about the methodology. You saw this before. This is really more of a recap, and I just want to, again, get the board to say, yes, we think you're going in the right direction, or no, we want you to do something different. And I also want to talk about how we update this data, because we think that we are going to see, we know we're going to see some additional data from CARPO in the next few months, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. So just to talk about how we came up with this methodology for sewer allocation. So currently, we have a plan to expand the 12 Mile Creek plant by 1.5 million gallons. That'll take it from 7.5 million gallons to 9 million gallons. We believe that it would be prudent to have a contingency or reserve of 10%. And we got that 10% based on the 80-20-90-10 rule. So the way the state works is, at 80%, you're supposed to be planning for expansion, at 90%, you should be under construction. And that 10% to 20% is where you're accounting for I and I, and projects that are sort of in the loop, in the hopper, so to speak. And so we thought that that was a reasonable option of having at least a contingency or reserve, and so we would take that off the top, and that will leave available about 1.35 million gallons to be allocated. Now, when we say that, the county is also a recipient. We have land area that we would need sewer capacity for. So it's not just municipalities, it would also include the county as well, the unincorporated portion of the county. So we looked at several different ways to evaluate this, and we landed on potential development, unserved and underserved or underdeveloped areas, as what we believe is the best way to go about calculating this. And so, again, we tried to take your sewer basins. You've got a 12 Mile Creek, which is in red there. You have Poplin, which is above that, and the reason why that's important is Poplin actually flows to 12 Mile Creek. It actually has a pump station, so it collects its own sewer flow in that area, but then it pumps it over Highway 74, and eventually taps into a gravity line and flows to the 12 Mile Creek, and we treat it at 12 Mile Creek. So it's important because it's part of the flows for 12 Mile Creek. So we would have to deal with both of those basins. Also, keep in mind that there is a limitation to how much we can actually flow from Poplin to 12 Mile. Even if you said, I want to give a million gallons of flow to Poplin, there's not enough capacity in the lines to send a million gallons more there. So there's always that limitation that we have to deal with. How much can you actually flow from Poplin to 12 Mile to treat? So that's a standard we have to keep in mind as well. So we looked at our projections of what has grown in the past, what has development been in the past, what do we intend as far as development? And that data was actually, we obtained that from CARPO, which is the regional transportation agency here in Union County and the surrounding region. And it's important because all the municipalities were part of that process. They gave their master plans, their land use plans, all of their data to show what they believed their growth would be in residential and non-residential. That was then factored into what kind of growth would occur region-wide, and then how Union County would play in the region. So we feel that that data is vetted. Everyone had an opportunity to submit information, they were all able to participate, so we feel that that's very comfortable, that you've got good information. That data is soon to be updated. We anticipate that in late summer, we will actually receive new population projections and employment growth projections from the CARPO board at that time. I'm going to go through some examples that we used of the current data. The current data was collected in 2018, but that's just for reference. We're going to recommend we wait until the CARPO data comes out before we officially assign the data and the actual allocation, because that's more up-to-date information. We think that would be better to use that data. But as an example, I'll show you what it would be based on the current data that's available. So as I showed that earlier before, you reserve a certain amount, it comes up to be, what, 1.35 million gallons, and then you would come up with what is your development potential and how does that apply to all the jurisdictions? We have residential, we have non-residential. Residential was a little more complicated, because we were saying, okay, what was the past? What's our history of our residential development? And that's a little easier to quantify as far as gallons, because we know how much a house generates, so that's pretty simple. So we took our past data, and then we took the CARPO future data, and combined that to come up with a residential development attraction number, or what is the possibility of development for residential within the entire basin, that 12 Mile Creek and Poplin Basin? All right. And we took non-residential. That was a little harder to come, to quantify, because that was based on jobs. The way CARPO provided it was, what jobs would be generated in our area, in our region? Well, jobs don't easily equate to sewer flow, so we had to kind of back into that and say, okay, well, a person working creates a certain amount of flow based on whatever the business that is, whether it's industrial, commercial, retail. And then we use that information to try to come up with a flow that we would get from your commercial or your non-residential uses. And those then went into ultimately, what is the utility allocation? Now, this is important. We didn't do a 50-50 split, because our own customer base is not 50-50. Our own customer base is about 70% residential and 30% commercial. That's what our customer base is. So we use that allocation, that split, because that's what our current customer base is. Now, you may think, well, you know, then you're not really trying to allocate sewer, not allocate, you're not really trying to give commercial development the attention that we think it should get. Well, the reality is, is residential generates more flow than commercial does. So if you base the flow amount on residential, the amount of allocation would be higher anyway. If the towns choose to use their allocation for commercial, they're actually gaining because they're, we're using the 70-30 split. It's actually more beneficial, in our opinion, if you use that split, because that's our current customer base. These are all things that we can discuss if the board has questions or if you want to look at it in a different way, but that's how we, that was our methodology on that. Ultimately, this yielded the share of, the percentage of what each development, each municipality had within the area. So Hemby Ridge makes up a very small area in the Poplin Basin, Indian Trail, as you can see, it's split by 12 Mile, and Poplin, Marvin, and it goes all the way through the list of what everyone makes up as far as their area within those basins. Union County's the largest, 43% within 12 Mile Creek, 35% within the Poplin area. That's, those are all what we make up as far as those areas. And if you take that, and you go by those allocations, you would yield, and again, I'm saying these are, these are numbers just for example. Hemby Ridge would get around 19,000 gallons, Indian Trail would get around 285,000 gallons, Lake Park Nun, 5,500 for Marvin, and I want you to understand, that's because Marvin has a small area within 12 Mile Creek. Most of their basin is in 6 Mile. It's just a very small area. That's why, that's why it's a little amount there. Merrill Springs, 38.5, Stallings, and you see, Union County has the lion's share. That's because we have the lion's share of the service area, and right on through the list there, which adds up to that $1.35 million in this scenario. These numbers will change based on whatever the CARPO data is that comes out. It could, you could see Indian Trail's number go up some. It may, it may come down. We're not going to know that until we get that data from CARPO. But this is the methodology and the means that we use to at least come up with the share, and so I want to stop there and ask, are there any questions? And do you have any concerns? Do you think we're going in the right direction? Is there something you'd like to see done differently? I'll just stop and see what you have.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Brian, thank you. I appreciate you and staff putting this together. I appreciate you and staff putting this together. I think that, personally, I think that we're on the right track. I think that it's good that we're starting to kind of see the framework of how this would look. And I think it's also very important that we, that we kind of inform folks that, you know, the whole purpose here, I believe, is so that we're trying to be, we're trying to offer a fair solution here, I think, for sewer, for municipalities and other parts of the county. I think that so many times what we've seen is, is we've seen smaller municipalities come, and they say, or they would say, "You know, hey, we need a small amount of sewer here." But yet, what we're seeing is, is that, you know, some of this sewer is being gobbled up by larger municipalities. And so, you know, I think that this provides us with a potential solution in the future. And I would also like to say this, that, you know, it's been mentioned a time or two, and it's been said, that the county has got an obligation to provide sewer. And as I understand it, and certainly you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but as I understand it, we have no legal duty to provide sewer, you know, to, say, the municipalities.
That's correct.
You know, we have to run a utility the best way we can. And so, legally, though, we don't have a legal duty to supply unlimited sewer. I think that we all need to recognize here that sewer is a precious resource. It's a very expensive resource, you know, that the ratepayers would pay for in the way of water and sewer rates. And we're seeing that right now, you know, as we've discussed Site B, for example. You know, where Site B probably started somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think, 300 million. And as the project has progressed, for one reason or another, now we're looking at round about 550 million dollars.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Near over a half a million dollars in cost for that project.
Yeah. So, I guess the overwhelming point here is, is that...
I'm sorry, half a million. Half a million, 500 million, sorry.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yes, a lot. And so, I think that the overwhelming theme here is, is that, once again, sewer is a very precious resource, and we have to be responsible, you know, with the sewer that we have. And so, first of all, thank you, and thank you to you and staff for putting this together. Again, I think that we're on the right, the right track, and I'd like to see this progress.
Sure.
And Mr. County Manager, as we go along this policy, I know this is in the early stages, but we're going to be able to amend and tweak and make some changes possibly along the way if need be.
Sure. The board always has the ability to change your policy, and this is an internal policy. It is not currently recommended that this become a contract or contractual arrangement with municipalities. This would be our policy. We implement it, we enforce it. Obviously, then that means you can amend it when you feel it's necessary. And that leads me into sort of talking about the policy itself. And I don't have that up here to put on the board. You guys have a copy of it that we talked about earlier. I'm just going to go through a few highlights with the actual policy, just to discuss that a little bit. One of the things to keep in mind is, you know, how's it applicable? And as I said, this is specific to the 12 Mile Creek expansion. That's what this is for. Now, in the future, if the board were to consider expanding that plant further or other plants, then you could either, A, extend this to those, or have a separate policy that applied to that other area, if you choose to. That's certainly appropriate if you want to. We talked about the methodology, and so far, you know, I'm getting a nod that at least you think we're going in the right direction. Obviously, we'll have additional data come late July, August, that we'll bring back to you. One of the other things that is important is how do we handle changes? And when I mean changes, I mean changes in municipal boundaries. It is common in this state and in Union County that municipalities grow in their boundaries. They either annex, or they just grow, because developers want to come in, and they say, "I want to be part of your area." As part of this policy, as municipal boundaries change, so would that allocation. It goes with the land. So, and that's only reasonable. Obviously, there is an allocation established for how that land would be developed, so that would then go to whatever jurisdiction that would become part of at that time. That's an important issue for us to consider. Also, we, I want to say, we're the ones who actually maintain control. As I stated earlier, it's our policy. So, we control that allocation, and municipalities would not be able to barter or sell or in other ways, use that capacity or that allocation in any way, form that they wanted to. It's, we allocate it, they then can use it, but they can't barter with another jurisdiction to use that in any way. And I think that's important. We have to track it. And the way we track it, because it is, the way that I think is easiest and more effective for us, is by a state-issued sewer permit. Most people do not know that Union County does not actually issue sewer permits. We are, we review the plans. We determine whether the plans meet standards. But ultimately, the state of North Carolina issues the permit for those projects. It's in our name. It's in our, it's a permit in our name, but we don't actually issue the permit. The state issues that permit. So, that's how we would track this. We would track it based on permits issued. And once a permit is issued, that's how the flow would be captured for whatever jurisdiction that's in. So, those are some highlights on the policy. I do want to say that this is a planning tool. We believe this will allow us to plan for the utility, and that's what's important here. This is not about telling municipalities how to grow and how they can grow. This is about planning for how the utility can accommodate development. That's our purpose. And so, I want to make that very clear, that that's our utility-based rationale. It's about how we plan for that development in the future. Any questions that the board may, you may have for me?
So, Brian, what do you need from us tonight? Do you need a vote on this? Do you have enough information to proceed?
I'm not seeing any heads nodding no. So, as long as I haven't seen any adamant no's, I think what I get out of this, we're in the right direction. Bring forward to you the additional data we have later, and a final draft of the policy, and then you can make decisions, tweaks, whatever you feel necessary. That's likely to be August timeframe, just to give you a little idea of when that'll take effect.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, let me just say explicitly, then, that I think, I think generally, this is headed in the right direction. I think we should have staff embrace the next phase of policy development. No doubt, some of this will get tweaked, you know? These may not, probably won't be, the final allocations that we land on. There are some important things to decide in terms of, you know, what constitutes a jurisdiction, ETJ, no ETJ. But I think we're headed in the right direction, and I definitely think staff ought to proceed with the next step.
Okay. Very. Thank you very much on that item.
The next item on the agenda is Item 24347, Poplin Road Pump Station Force Main Discharge Location and Alternatives Analysis. I will again recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, obviously, we've had a lot of interest over the last few meetings or so from our residents on what do we do related to our odor issue at the Heritage subdivision, which is essentially related to flow that comes from our Poplin pump station, which then discharges to the subdivision. So, that is really the crux of the issue. You've got a large amount of sewer flow that comes from that pump station, and ultimately discharges at a manhole in this subdivision. So, I wanted to kind of first go over a few things and give you the, sort of, the background on this. This is, the plan for the subdivision as a whole is broken up into multiple phases. This area over here, I believe, is under construction. There are some areas that are completed. This is complete. This area here, I believe, is complete. I'm not sure how much of this area is complete, but overall, what you have is phases of a development that are under some form of construction or completed. Now, you might not be easy to see, and I apologize, but the actual force main comes in to the subdivision in this area here. Comes in, and it actually ties into a manhole at that location. Now, the original request, there were four alternatives that were looked at on how to actually discharge the Poplin flow to this area. Poplin already flowed to this in the past. It was there. It already did this. Developer purchased this land, said, "I want to develop it. I want to put a subdivision in it. How can I develop my subdivision and still be able to utilize or work around this force main that has all of this flow in it?" So, there were four alternatives. The number one alternative, the one that the county actually recommended, and went on record as saying we believed that they should actually do, actually indicated that that discharge should happen here. That they actually have a force main built all the way through the neighborhood and flow to this point, where that would then discharge and not be a direct discharge into the neighborhood. That was our recommended solution. The developer chose not to make that connection. And I have an email where the developer says he didn't see any reason to spend the extra money on that connection. It was additional gravity flow and additional force main that they would have to pay for in order to be able to make that solution work. So, they chose an alternative which did not require them to extend that force main. Now, I know everyone makes, has the question of, "Well, why did the county approve this?" Well, the reason why the county approved this is, we don't have any regulations that regulate odor. They regulate hydraulics. Can this work from a hydraulic standpoint? And the answer is, it works either way. It works hydraulically if you flow to this point and you discharge there. It works hydraulically if you flow and connect to there. And that is simply the bottom line. We had no engineering means to say it will not work from a hydraulic perspective to flow there. Our regulations don't handle odor. The other part of it is, the state actually issues the permit. They also review those plans. They found no issues with those plans either. Now, again, they don't regulate odor as well, because that's not part of what they look at. They found that they met the requirements for a hydraulic engineering solution. So, I know there's been a lot of questions about that. It's simply because we didn't have a mechanism to say no. We did, in fact, recommend that they use a different alternative. That was not selected. It wasn't until around 2019 that we actually started getting the complaints. We indicated to the developer that we believed there would be issues with odor. We couldn't prove it. We didn't have any data to prove there would be odor issues. We just said, "We believe there will be odor issues." Again, we didn't start getting complaints until the neighborhood started being constructed, people living in their houses. About 2019 is when we started getting complaints from the residents out there on the odor issue. And they have a valid complaint. There is an odor issue. I don't want to, you know, try to say anything less. There is certainly an odor issue. So, what do we do about it? What are your options? Because there is an odor issue. We had a consultant go out there, look at it to see, well, you know, are we actually seeing something? There are high levels of concentration of H2S. There are, and you can see, that's the information. What are the contributing factors to this odor? It is the turbulent flow from Poplin Pump Station that sends it there, and it's the age. It's a really long flow, and I'll show a little map of that. This is where this flow originates, and it comes all the way down to here, where it actually makes that connection. That's a lot of distance and a lot of time for that flow to be in that pipe. So, it creates its own odor issues just by default in there a long time, and there's a lot of it, turbulent. Let's see if I can go back here. So, you know, how do we handle this? The board asked the staff to go out and evaluate, "What are your options? What can be done about this?" So, we came up with some alternatives based on some engineering recommendations. You can do a vapor phase treatment. You can modify or relocate the force main. And you can do a liquid phase treatment. You can do one of these, you can do them all, you can do none, honestly. Then, the board has the ability to say, "We're not going to do any of them." But you ask, "What are the possible solutions here?" So, just to talk about the vapor, just to give you an idea of what that is. Those are manhole scrubbers. That's one option there. Later, you'll see that it was recommended that you take a potential two-phase approach to that vapor phase solution, and then a liquid chemical solution. So, that's manhole scrubbers is one of those. Those are already installed currently. The staff actually did go out and install those manhole scrubber inserts in there. That's relatively low cost, but it was indicated that that was a two-tiered approach to that. Then, there's a misting system. The misting system is a little more of, invasive is the wrong word, but it creates an issue in the neighborhood, because you have to have the misting station. You have to set it up. You have to have somewhere for it. It's putting that chemical and that mist system into your manholes. If you design the neighborhood upfront with that, much easier to handle, to regulate. Lot more difficult to deal with after the fact, and this is after the fact. So, it would create a little bit more of a challenge to be able to handle that. Everyone say, "Well, okay, why don't we relocate the force main?" Well, originally, we said the force main should be located to a different location. So, well, okay, if you said, "We want to relocate it now," well, that's millions of dollars to relocate that force main now. That's not an inexpensive solution. But if you were to do it, there are several options. There's the option of bringing it in the area here, which is kind of a common area, and then making a connection at this discharge point here. There's the option of coming in and actually creating a force main, not a gravity, in this area here, leading into this connection. So, you basically seal all of this off, make it a true force main. You'd have a gravity system inside as well as a force main. And then, you have a solution where you would run this all the way up and then back down to this connection. That's a lot of distance, obviously, and you'll see in the end, that has the highest cost, because you're traveling such a great distance. You have some different mechanisms in order to get it there, to get it ultimately to discharge. So, you can obviously look at doing a relocation or modification of the force main. And then, there were some alternatives that you could look at based on some of those. Their option costs were a little bit less. That's if you took this existing gravity, you turned it into a force main and discharged into this point. That has a little bit less cost. And then, if you were to create an odor misting system, but actually put it off in this area, that was another option as well. And then, you got into what were called your liquid phase treatments. And this is the one that the staff actually recommended, that if you wanted to do something, that you consider doing. And the reason that the staff recommended that is that ultimately, there is a larger system benefit from having this liquid phase treatment. And the reason why I say that is, while there's an odor issue that this neighborhood is dealing with, there is also a corrosion issue that we're dealing with in our system. Those gases from the Poplin pump station are corrosive, and they do have an effect on our manholes in our system. And that costs money for us to rehab and rehabilitate those manholes over time. And that costs money for us to rehab and rehabilitate those manholes over time. We currently don't have a liquid phase treatment for that pump station. And it is intended that we will operate that pump station for at least 10 more years, possibly 20 or more. Depends on what the board's decision is in the future for what you do with Site B. Whether you do anything or not, that pump station will still have to operate until we do something with that or not. So, again, staff's perspective was you have a longer-term benefit from a system-wide approach with the liquid phase approach. If someone asked me the question of, "Well, why don't you just relocate the force main? That will solve the problem." Well, all that does is really move the smell to somewhere else. That's really all it does. It doesn't do away with the corrosion issue that we have to deal with. We still would have to deal with that at some point in the future. So that was the reason why the staff came up with that as a preferred alternative if the board were wanting to consider that. So there are different types of liquid phase treatment options there. That's just to give you some information on it. It would be recommended that we do a pilot program if we were to do this. And the reason why I say that is it, one solution may not actually work. So I want to make that very clear. Liquid phase, there's no guarantee it works or it doesn't work. We won't know until we actually test it. And so we would likely test one, see how well it works. If it's not doing what we feel like it needs to do, if it's complicated, if it creates issues, we would want to test the other method, see how that works. So this would be a multiple-phase approach. We'd want to do that testing over several months before we made a final decision which one is the best solution for us. We're optimistic that they'll work, but which one is the best, we won't know until we actually try it. So let's talk about some costs. What are those costs? And you saw this information previously. The easiest, the most simplest one's the one we've already done. That's the manhole scrubber units. Those are already in place. You've got your relocation alternatives. You can see they range from just shy of $1 million to over $2 million. You had those modification alternatives, ones where you were doing some work in the existing system. It's still well over half a million dollars to do those approaches there. And then you do have some ongoing maintenance. And then ultimately, you have the liquid phase alternatives. Now, you see, there's not really much capital cost in that, and that's because there's really not a lot of equipment. It's tanks that have the chemicals, and it's the chemicals, and it's really then the cost of running all the utilities, putting the chemicals in, which is really more an operating cost. And those run around $250,000 a year. $250,000 a year for as long as we operate the system. And that price will go up. You know, the cost of chemicals will go up. That's the estimated cost today. But over time, you will see that will go up. But that's a permanent cost that you would pay. A relocation of a force main is a one-time cost. You pay to relocate it. It's done, but the corrosion part isn't resolved, which is one of the reasons why the staff said they felt like this was a better option if you chose to move forward with doing a correction or a mitigation of this issue. So lastly, and I want, first off, let me stop and say, are there any questions? Do you have any questions about any of this information?
Mr. Chairman. Brian, so just so we're all clear here, when you say a permanent cost, so if the board decided to adopt a chemical treatment tonight, then, you know, we could look at one of these three options here. But what we're essentially looking at is, well, a bare minimum of $250,000 till the end of time. And this would be like an annual-type cost, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And so then we would also be at the mercy of, you know, whoever the manufacturer is of these chemicals in the future. So, you know, if they wanted to raise their rates or their cost, so to speak, to us, $300,000 next year or, you know, $400,000 the next year, we're kind of locked in at that.
We would be locked in to the point of if we told them that we were going to go with another system, there is a charge which we would basically have to pay. They'd call it restocking fee, but it's kind of like that. Basically, they would charge us to come back and get all their equipment and remove it, and then we'd have to move to a different vapor solution. I mean, sorry, liquid phase solution. So you'd be incurring another upfront cost on that. Though it doesn't go away, you just may go with a different vendor. You're just perpetually chasing a vendor is what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Weid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, are we doing liquid phase treatments anywhere else in our system?
No, sir.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Out of curiosity, did the filter over the manhole, obviously, it didn't fix the problem, but did you notice any significant change to the odor?
We have not at this point in time. Now, understand, we're not out there regulations a lot. So weather conditions will dictate whether it's a really bad day or if it's a moderate day for that. So we haven't determined that there has really been a significant change based on the vapor solution.
Any complaints outside of the community?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not going to say that there aren't. I'm just not aware of any outside the community.
Does the odor drift completely through the community?
It's our opinion, and again, we haven't done a study, but it's our opinion that this is really more focused in one of the initial area that was built, and that's roughly anywhere from 50 to 100 homes. We have no idea, is it all 100 homes that are affected by the odor? Is it 50 or is it 30? We've just, based on what we see where the connection is, it's anywhere from that 50 to 100 homes that we think may be affected by the odor issue. The new section isn't really even connected to this. So they're not experiencing that odor issue. They're still part of the subdivision, but we're not aware they're experiencing any of that odor issue at this time.
Have you had any contact from the developer?
We have not. And then we did reach out to them officially, ask if they would be willing to participate. We've received no comment from them on potentially participating on any cost associated with this. And so that leads me really into the next part of this, and that is, how do you pay for this? If the board really wants to move forward, how's it paid for? And well, case, well, number one, you know, all the ratepayers pay for it. Because right now, I want to explain to you that there is not a budget for this in our current budget. So the fees that the board, the rates that the board adopted do not accommodate an additional operating expense nor an expense for relocating the actual force main. So if you pick one or the other, we're going to have to, we're going to have to change the budget for our utility, and we're going to have to cover those costs that the ratepayers would then have to pay. I think I said earlier, when we were talking about the short line program, a quarter percent only yields $50,000 a year. So you're talking about one and a quarter percent to generate $250,000 in cash to pay for this, and you wouldn't pay for this with debt. That doesn't make any sense. This is an operating expense. You would need to increase your rates by a minimum of one and a quarter percent to accommodate that $250,000 in additional operating cost. Now, if you were to do a relocation of the force main, well, you could pay for that with debt. Now, obviously, you've got to pay that debt charge every year until it's done, but you could actually go out to the market and get debt to pay for that. That's a little bit different. It just depends on how you want to accommodate that. But as we said, that doesn't fix the corrosion side of it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Brian, thank you for pointing that out. So I think you bring up a good point, and I don't want this to be lost. So, you know, when we're looking at the cost here, I think that everybody needs to understand this is not taxpayer dollars.
That's correct.
This is being funded by the ratepayers of Union County. So everyone that pays water and sewer service, you know, this is the folks that purchased that service from the county. That's the fund that this would be coming out of. And so when we're looking at $168,000 all the way up to, you know, $2 million, what we are essentially looking at is increasing the rates here, to your point, a bare minimum of potentially 1.25%.
That's correct, yes, sir. And again, that, and there are other options. Now, I'm going to say this, and this is not going to be popular. I can already feel the groans that'll be back there behind me, but there is the ability where the board has, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No, well, I was just going to say, I mean, so, you know, understand that that's the bottom, all right? So if we're looking at, you know, some of these other values here, we're talking about substantial rate increases.
Yes, sir, certainly.
Could be.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And then, and then too, that doesn't take into consideration the rising cost of, say, like, the chemical services.
Correct.
You know, that we mentioned earlier. So I want to make that clear, that it's not just, it's not coming from a general fund. We're not sitting on the cash. It's not coming from taxpayer dollars. You know, this is coming from all the ratepayers in the county.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then option two, and this is, again, this is the one that's not going to be popular, is the board has the ability to implement a special assessment. Special assessments are allowed by general statutes. At that point in time, the board would then determine what level of assessment you wanted the neighborhood to cover. I want to make sure everyone understands that the way special assessments work is that those that benefit from the assessment are the only ones that can be charged. Essentially, we'd have to do some type of a study to determine what homes actually are impacted by the odor. And then that would actually yield how many are affected that would go into a special assessment. And then the board would decide to what degree that assessment would be, or they're going to cover 100% of the costs, they're going to cover 50%, 25%. That is really up to the board as far as what you felt is appropriate for that. Again, that's an option that the board has if you choose to go that route. So it's either all the ratepayers pay for the costs, it's either a special assessment and we subsidize that cost some way, or you find another willing participant developer who is willing to contribute to help cover some of these costs. Now, again, I'm going to say this, there is a system benefit to the liquid phase solution. So ultimately, I think that it is the utility who benefits by having that in place over the long run, but some of those initial costs really should be borne, in my opinion, by someone else. Any more questions for me? I do want to talk about the report that has been kind of floating around out there just so that everyone's kind of aware of that. That's actually a copy of the update for our wastewater master plan. So we did a master plan back in 2011. They did an update to that in 2016. That report deals with capacity. It is a strategy for how we grow the capacity for the system in the long term. It is not about how you address odor. Odor certainly might be a benefit that comes out of it, but that was not about how you regulate or how you change odor issues created by a force main connection. I also want to point out that that is a plan, and it doesn't become effective until a board decides to put capital dollars into a program to actually run that program. It's only a plan until you actually fund the cost of doing something. Now, past boards didn't fund anything to do with that plan. A previous board voted to purchase land to ultimately move forward with doing something. So it really doesn't become a reality until someone puts money towards actually doing that. It takes anywhere from eight to 10 years to build a sewer plant. So this would have had to start back in 2016, long before any of you were part of this, for that plant to be built. Today, the estimate of that plant, and I think you brought this up, Commissioner Helms, is over $500 million. The rate impact for that plant, we had that discussion previously, is a 25% or greater rate increase over the course of five-plus years. That's a lot of money for ratepayers to have to absorb to be able to cover that cost. But that's not lost on the fact that it is an expensive endeavor.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Merrill.
Since we're on that topic of the land that was purchased, in 2016, when that study was updated or whatever, was the purchase on Ridge Road at Site B part of that, of this solution? Because it's been referred to many times tonight in public comments.
No, so the original solution was a Site A, which was actually located somewhere near the Unionville area. That was the original solution.
Was Site A approved for discharge permits from the state?
It was, yes, ma'am.
Was Site B approved for discharge permits at Site B?
It has not been, no, ma'am.
Along that line, I would like for the community to know that Site B, not only did the state say it was not a viable location for a sewer plant, it said it would never be viable for a sewer plant and that they would never approve Site B. I was told, along with waiting on the discharge permits, and then comes next the environmental study and the possibility of the hill splitter muscle possibly being in that area, that a sewer plant would take maybe 10 to 15 years by the time you get the discharge permits, which have already been denied, and said that the state said, "We will never, they will never give us permission to put a sewer plant on Site B." And then you'd have to wait many years for an environmental study. So I've always been told 10 to 15 years for a new sewer plant, which would, if the state would give us permission, would put us at 2034 or 2040 if that land were viable.
I'm sorry, I do need to make a bit of a correction. So you can build a sewer plant on Site B. You'd have to pump that flow to another discharge point.
For another $200,000?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't say the-
Million dollars that was never discussed by the prior board or this board.
That's right.
Which brings us to over $500 million.
Yes, ma'am.
So my clarification is going to be that the state said Site B is not viable for a discharge permit.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That is correct. I just want to make sure that we all know that it is not allowed for discharge permit. Yes, ma'am.
And Unionville and Fairview said that they would not approve for it to be discharged at Site A, that when Site A was approved many years ago by a prior board, and the prior board walked away from Site A, and they never spent the money on it.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
But on the, at the very end of their term, I think with maybe one or two meetings left in their term, they spent $4.6 million of the ratepayers' money to purchase land that turned out to not be viable.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think that the overwhelming, I think that what everyone needs to know is this, is that Site B was not intended to fix an odor issue.
Correct.
Site B was intended to provide more capacity for more growth in the county. And so, you know, to Commissioner Merrill's point, you know, there's a lot of details that go into a sewer plant. You know, we can look at the original cost projections versus what we're looking at now, and there's a big difference.
Yep.
You know, bottom line is, is that, you know, we're talking about $550 million to make something like that viable, and, you know, even with that, it's not intended to fix the problems that we're seeing in Heritage. So, you know, the problems that we're seeing in Heritage are completely unrelated to a sewer plant. Sewer plant is intended to provide capacity. So I want to, I want to just take a minute and let everyone know that, because we've got several Heritage folks here. You know, I did ride out there. I rode out there last week. I parked my truck, and I took my kids, and we strolled around Curling Drive. Or, yep, so I actually- Curling Drive. Yep, so I actually looked at all of your addresses. Looked at all of your addresses, and I drove around, parked my pickup, and walked around. And to Mr. Man... Our county manager's point, there is an odor, you know, and I witnessed some of that. But I wanna be clear, and I want everyone to understand here, that this is not, Site B's not your end-all, be-all fix. And then furthermore, you know, to our county manager's point, you know, the sheer cost alone of that, you know, is not something that the majority of this board was willing to take on.
It takes on.
And, you know, yeah, again, I mean, you're looking at 10 years plus. So I just wanna, I think that's a great point. I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think that the public needs to understand that these are two different issues. You know, you're dealing with capacity versus, you know, one that's been well documented regarding turbulent flow that's causing an odor. So I can see that there's a couple of folks out there shaking their head, but again, $550 million sewer plant is not intended to provide odor control. I think that it's also critical for everyone to understand, too, that a code, a code doesn't regulate odor. A code regulates the minimum method of construction. And so what a code basically says is, is that you have to do this, you can do this, but it essentially stipulates a minimum method that construction has to be done. It's looking for functionality. When you're talking about odor, you're talking about something that's subjective. So I wanna clarify, and I wanna make sure that everyone in the audience understands, because I know that a lot of you are sitting here waiting around on that, but, you know, you are talking about a minimum method of construction, and one that has to be permitted should it meet certain requirements. Am I correct, Mr. County Manager?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Obviously, there's a lot of information here, and I'm not sure what the board's inclination is, if you wanna give direction, or you wanna think about this. One of the things that I mentioned is, if you are interested in exploring the special assessment option, there's work that we have to do. We actually have to go out and determine who's affected by that, and that would take a study. We'd actually have to spend some money on having someone go out there and determine the limits of that. So if the board is interested in at least exploring that, I would at least, I'd need sort of a, you know, a decision or direction from the board, yes, we want you to look into that. That's not adopting a special assessment. That's merely given us to go ahead to develop the means to have information to do one in the future if you want to. If you don't, that's fine. I'm just saying that's an option. We need to know if we're gonna actually move forward with gathering that data.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think before we even take that step, I'd like to hear from the residents in Heritage. I mean, y'all have been very good about coming to meetings and emailing us and calling us, and so certainly let us know. I mean, I appreciate that the county is in the unique position to actually address the problem, perhaps fix the problem. I'm willing to entertain some sort of cost share. Are you all willing to entertain, as residents, as owners, a special assessment? If you are, let me know, and let's have a conversation. And then we'll know whether or not we can take the next step that the county manager has just described.
Can I ask one question from Mr. Matthews' presentation from the very beginning, is the fact that he recommended, or his team recommended, a certain way of doing the sewer, and Coulter was able to just go around his decision and do what they wanted to do?
It's not a decision, and that's what you need to understand. We have no authority to say no. We gave them a recommendation, which was the best solution. They are not required because there is an alternative that meets hydraulic requirements. So we couldn't say no. We had to say yes, because that's how the rules are written. I don't have a choice in the matter. But Coulter made the decision. They can say all they want to. They made the decision that it was more cost-effective for them to choose that option.
But here we are, wanting us to bear the burden of their mistakes.
I completely understand. I'm only giving...
And I don't even live on Curling Creek.
Sure.
Could I make one comment, please? Coulter continues to develop in Union County. So if he could bypass that, what else is he bypassing in his others? Ugly.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I can just say this, and this is, you know, to staff and also the residents that are still here, you know, I want you guys to understand that, you know, I believe that there's nobody that sits on this board that sits there and wants to just ignore an issue. This is something that, you know, our staff has been discussing that we've been discussing. You know, again, I went out there, I looked for myself. And in my time on this earth, I've learned that two wrongs don't make a right, okay? I've learned that. And I understand that there's a lot of folks here that are very, very frustrated right now. I do. I understand it, because I've been there. I've sat out there, and I've been frustrated before. All right? And so I want you to, I want you to know that I understand that frustration. But I also understand, too, that the mistakes that were made, all right, the problem that we are facing right now was not created by just one party. It wasn't created by, you know, just Union County. It wasn't created by... There's a multitude of reasons that we're sitting here today. And so, you know, with that in mind, what I would like to see as a solution for all this is, is to bring all parties together, okay? So that would be the county, that would be the residents, that would be even Coulter, and maybe even the state, you know, who knows? So I want to, I wanna be clear that, you know, I do understand, and my heart goes out to you guys, because I understand you're facing an issue. You're facing a problem. And I think there is a willingness for the county to become involved there, at least from this board. But we can't bear that burden alone. And understand that, you know, if we sat there today and we said, "You know what? We're gonna go ahead and approve, you know, this service," you know, what we're essentially doing is we're asking every single ratepayer in the county to pay for a mistake that is arguably not shared by this county. So I want you to understand that that's kinda where we're at. And I tend to support Commissioner Williams', you know, thought here, that there needs to be some discussion. There needs to be some feedback from the residents here at Heritage, you know, as to whether or not, you know, you guys would be amenable to something like a special assessment. And you know what? I would even go so far as to say that, you know, I'd like to see staff at least look into the initial cost of it, so that we have some, some, some kind of starting point there, I guess, for the cost that the county would incur by, you know, going through a special assessment. Because understand that we may find out that it's not just the current residents that are sitting here that are affected, that this could be future phases of this development that are still yet to be constructed.
May I ask a question, sir?
It's not a public...
I just, I'm not being disrespectful, but just a couple points of clarity on something brought up here. And maybe some of this is anecdotal in your mind. Curling Creek is not only impacted, if you come down Evergreen, which was, Commissioner Helms, if you were there, you know Evergreen is what button bucks up to it. So there's a significant, and based on wind direction, that exponentially expands. So it's more than just Curling Creek, number one. Number two, nobody in our community has put their hat on or their decision on Site B, or a $550 billion project. Billion, I know, but I just... We clearly took the recommendations from your water folks, and there is an extended benefit that comes from the water treatment process. It isn't just us. So we're very aware that it's expanded more than Curling Creek. Nobody's advocating for a half-a-billion-dollar project. Whether the site was purchased for $4.6 million on something that could never be developed, of course, my need is, "Let's sell that property back, and let's use that to fund a $2 billion relocation." You still make $2.5 million. So at the end of the day, there's a lot to this. I know it's steering towards an assessment. I'm confident that our neighbors would rather see a lawsuit. I'm just telling you that we, I'll sit down with you, by the way, after this. Thank you for letting me clarify those points. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but it's expanded more than Curling Creek. Nobody's looking at a $500 million option.
Any further discussion by the board?
First of all, I appreciate the one thing that I made point last time I was here, I'm gonna make it again tonight. I'm all for getting all these parties in the room, the builders, the developer, you guys, us, in a very civilized fashion, where we sit down and we discuss. The one thing I wanna make clear to everybody in this room, commissioners and all the residents, the only people in this room that are not at fault and not to blame for this is the people who bought the homes and were not told about this odor issue. So when we sit together, I want it made clear, okay, that I just bought a house. I didn't buy a problem. The problem, and I happen to agree with you, I think Coulter's got some culpability here, and they refuse to come to the table. I don't wanna use New York terms, because that's where I'm from, but I have a New York term for them, okay? And I hope that if we can get the right constituents in the room, we can come to its conclusion. I don't think the homeowners should bear that cost. I happen to think Coulter should. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Merrill.
I'd like to ask the county manager, okay, so if we were to direct staff to issue a special assessment, and, you know, how quickly could you get this turned around? Because how long does that take?
It would take months for us to be able to do that. It's, first off, we have a mechanism, a legal framework we have to follow. We actually have to get Indian Trail and Wesley Chapel to actually approve that because of the methodology. Those towns actually have to be involved in that. So it would be months before we could go through that process and get it to a point where it was in place.
Okay. And if you did the 50-day trial period that was discussed earlier, how soon could a trial period start, just to see if there are any, if implementing the two steps, if that were a solution, how soon could that be implemented?
That could actually be implemented as fast as we could do a contract. Usually that takes us anywhere from 30 to 45, 60 days to get a contract in place. So as fast as we could run through the contract process, we could get that in place.
So where did the 50-day trial come from? I mean, how did you land on 50 days, as opposed to 60 or 90?
It was recommended by the vendor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And are there funds?
There are not funds for that. For the 50-day trial. Now, we could obviously shift funds from other projects, but you'd have to make that up at some point in the future, and we could do that. We could certainly shift funds from other projects that are future planned, and we could cover that cost and then figure out how you make up for that at a later time. That is something we could do.
So how much is a 50-day trial period?
Both of the options were around 67... One was 67,500, and the other one was 67,000. And again, we would try one, make sure it was working more appropriately. If it's not, if we have issues with it, we would want to then try the second one, just to make sure. Now, if it's working great, there's no need to look at the second option, but we would want the ability to be able to say, "That one's not working. It's not meeting our needs. We'll need to look at the second option." Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Brian, as I'm looking over the pilot costs, if you can just humor the board here for a minute, so how does this work here? So if we decided to go with the pilot program, and we, you know, went forward with $67,000, the demobilization cost, I'm just guessing that some of this is gonna be refunded, correct?
Yeah, so if you choose the option in order to, if you choose to stay with that company, then there are no demobilization costs. They basically just roll that into the future cost of the whole plant, of the chemicals, and all that's all you pay for. But if you say, "I don't wanna go," they've gotta get their tanks, they've gotta get their equipment that does the injection, and they're gonna charge you for...
That's the restocking fee.
That's right, restocking fee.
Okay.
And if we do the, if we do the chemical or the 50-day trial period, and that results in negative results, I mean, we could still have the option of a, what Commissioner Williams suggested, but there are no guarantees regardless of what we do, correct? That is correct. I mean, again, we're optimistic, but we can't guarantee it will actually solve the entire problem. Because again, that vapor, I mean, that liquid phase is really about corrosion. As an added benefit, it provides an odor issue, it provides an odor reduction, but it's really about corrosion.
Which, if I heard you correctly, benefits the county.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
But we're not doing it anywhere in the system presently.
We are not.
And so, also, I mean, what we're talking about here in this case is we're talking about PVC pipes, correct? Not ductile?
Yeah, so we do have some ductile, and there are some areas where it would be beneficial for that. And the most that we would benefit is really in our manhole rehabilitation program. We have significant number of manholes, those concrete, as well as the metal, or have corrosive impacts from those gases.
And how often would you say, I mean, do you have any kind of estimate about how long these things last under these conditions?
So, cost-wise, I can tell you that to rehab a manhole generally is between 10 and 15,000. To replace one is 25,000 to 50,000, depending on, you know, the depth and some of those issues with it. We try not to replace them. It's really expensive. Honestly, we may replace five or six a year, I'm sorry, rehab five or six a year, more. It just, it really depends. Because honestly, what we're looking at is, we're gonna have to maintain the system a lot longer, so that's gonna have more of a corrosive effect.
Isn't it possible to do a trial period and initiate a study? We're in the height of heat and humidity going into the summer months. So we're either gonna find out this two-step thing works, or it doesn't work, and it can stop at the 50th day, at the end of the 50th day, while we are gathering the special assessment, correct?
Certainly, yes, ma'am.
And because if we wait months on the special assessment, we're not gonna have the opportunities of dealing with heat and humidity necessarily if we wait. Whereas if we do the test now, we would know if it's a yay or a nay.
I absolutely agree. If the board were to say that they're going to put in the pilot program, you would get your most benefit if you're going to get benefit during these next three, four months, honestly.
So with that being said, I'd like to offer a motion for the board to consider that we do move forward with a 50-day pilot program with the liquid phase alternatives, and also direct staff to initiate a special assessment, and bringing all parties together to work towards this solution.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Merrill...
Commissioner Merrill, just for clarification, are you offering a motion to initiate the, um, the special assessment or the study for the special assessment?
So I don't want to split hairs here, unless you're splitting hairs here, but is the study not for the special assessment?
Yeah, I think that's what we're getting at. You're, you're going to, we're going to need to have the information before you can make the decision. I think that's what Commissioner Helms was trying to clarify.
Yes, so my, my apologies. Um, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, is that the motion is for the study to be performed to understand the scope of the special assessment.
Yes, okay, I ex- I agree with that. In conjunction with starting a, um, 50-day trial, just to si- because if, if this turns out not to be a solution, if the, if the two-tier recommendation that was offered months ago doesn't work, then we're still moving forward with the study. And, and then we either have something that does work or doesn't work when we, um, get the results back.
And you're, eh, she's talking about at the lowest rate?
Yes.
So yeah, the, uh, but there are two, um, U, UPS, I think, and I cannot say the other one, which are roughly the same cost for their pilot program. Those would be the two that we would recommend. One of those two, and we would select one, likely the USP, UPS, whatever it is, I don't have it in front of me. Likely use that one as our, our original test because they're the ones who actually talk about a 50-day. I think the other one says 40-day.
Forty-five.
We would do the, the 50-day and see how that works and bring back that information as well as any of the special assessment information to the board once we have that. Understand, it would likely take us, you know, a month or so to get a contract in place to be able to do the pilot program.
So that is my motion. And I would just say that when, you know, if this were to pass, I would just ask that staff let the board know when it starts and what the 50-day will be and when we can, um, and, and who's going to be going out there and, and seeing if it's working or not? How we monitor that.
Yes ma'am.
Any further discussion on Commissioner Merrill's motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Helms.
This is a question for Brian. So, um, so how much of a restocking fee are we talking about? Are we talking about 15 grand or are we talking about 7,500?
So, um, the, if you use the U- So if you use the USP Technologies one, um, their, their demobilization cost is $7,500. If you use the other one is 67,000, which is why, of course, we would pick the USP to do first because their cost not to do their system is a lot less, obviously. And we're hopeful that that would be the one that works.
And we get more days out of the study too.
We did, yes ma'am.
Okay. Um, so, so, um, I, I'll be in support of the motion. I, um, I, I think, you know, again, um, there's a willingness to try to find a solution here on the county's part. And, uh, and I believe that this is at least a step. You know, it will help us determine, you know, whether this could be a viable solution. And, uh, and then all the while, hopefully, you know, as we're looking at the study for the special assessment, then perhaps we can get all parties to come to the table. You know, my suggestion would be, you know, for, uh, the developer here in this project, you know, who has additional phases coming up, um, that may be affected by the special assessment. My hope, my opinion is, um, that, eh, you know, when, uh, things like a reputation may be on the line, that, uh, that they would certainly recognize that and offer some willingness to engage not only with the residents, but also with the county. And so I would like to extend that invite, you know, to the developer, um, you know, to come forward. You know, we're, we're, we're available and, and we'd love to hear from Coulter on this one. But I will be in support of the motion, thank you, Commissioner Merrill.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject a, a few items. With the dollar amount on this contract, it will most likely have to come back to this board anyway. It's over that $50,000 manager threshold. And we also have to look to see how it's going to be classified. Is it professional services, is it goods and services, is it construction? So, um, we will find all that information very, very quickly, but it, it most likely will have to come back to you all for approval. Just wanted to clarify that.
Unless we give the manager approval tonight or?
Correct. You can do that, I believe.
Then I'd like to make, um, an amendment to my motion to go ahead and give the county manager permission to get the answers to your question and move forward with a 50-day trial period.
I, I defer to Ben, but I think, I think that'd be okay up to a certain dollar amount. I'd, I'd ask for some clarification on how that should be worded.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as it relates to the authority, that's fine. If we have to look, I, you know, I'm not familiar exactly with the classification of a service versus a good for this particular, uh, treatment. But if for some reason we do have to come back to the board for that reason, we, we can. But otherwise, I think it would be appropriate, if you want to go ahead and give the manager on the monetary side, the authority, the contract and authority, that would be acceptable.
So I will, I will add to that friendly amendment, um, not to exceed $70,000.
Any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion, say aye. All opposed?
No.
The next matter of business is the 2024 Union County Public Schools Bond Referendum. I'll recognize Beverly Law's for this side.
Good evening again, commissioners. Um, if you'll recall at your last meeting, you gave staff direction to move forward with a bond referendum request for Union County Public Schools. So I'll be brief in going back through this information and jump to the resolutions. So Union County Public Schools has requested a bond referendum request be placed on the ballot for November 2024. Their request was for Parkwood High School Phase One for design for East Union Middle School construction, which is turning the current Forest Hills High School into East Union and program contingency and management costs for a total request of $39,421,000. If you'll recall, over the last several meetings, we went through the legislative required language for a new bond referendum request, the estimated cost of that over the life of the bond and the estimated property tax impact for this request was 0.8 cents or an annual increase to a taxpayer based on $100,000 value of property of $8. Um, I just want to clarify that, that bonds are actually issued in increments of $5,000. Therefore, the financing amount has to be rounded up to the nearest $5,000. So the resolutions include the amount of $39,425,000. So the schedule of items that have to take place in order to meet the deadline to actually get this on the ballot, tonight you have in front of you two resolutions for the first steps in this pro- um, process. And then following that, if these are approved tonight, we'll move forward with each additional step thereafter. And you have those steps laid out here for your, um, information. So the first resolution that's presented tonight is the resolution directing the publication of the notice of intention to apply to the local government commission for approval of bonds. And what this resolution does is authorizes the clerk to the board to actually publish this notice of intent in our local Enquirer Journal, um, which if you approve this tonight, it would be published in the Tuesday edition of the EJ this week. The second resolution that is included in your packet tonight is the resolution making certain statements of fact concerning the proposed school bond issue and authorizing the application to the local government commission. And what this resolution really is intended to do is authorize me as the finance director, working with our financial advisor and bond attorney to actually submit that application to the local government commission. The certain statements of facts that is outlined in this really is regard to how bonds are issued in the market, the financing of those bonds, and how we market those with underwriters throughout the bond sale process. And the full resolutions are of course provided in your agenda package tonight. This is not the full resolution that I have on the screen because it is several pa- pages long. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding the two resolutions. And if there's no questions, there are two action items requested tonight for the adoption of the resolutions. And I have the wording on the screen as it would need to be read for the, the first resolution for the notice of intent to apply.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
So, y- you know, obviously the, the board gave direction to, to do this last time. And so, um, so I, I'll go ahead and make the, uh, the motion, um, two motions then. The first one is, uh, that we adopt the resolution directing publication of notice to an, uh, notice of intent to apply to the local government commission for $39,425,000 of general, uh, obligation school bonds to pay the capital cost of providing for the design, construction and renovation of facilities for Union County Public Schools, including but not limited to the design of a new high school to be known as Parkwood High School and the design and renovation of converting the current Forest Hills High School into a middle school to be known as East Union Middle School. The, the acquisition of equipment and furnishings therefore, and the acquisition of land or rights away if necessary. And then I'll go ahead and make the second motion, perhaps we can vote on these together, Mr. Chairman. And the second motion would be to adopt resolution making certain statements of facts concerning the proposed school bond issue and authori- authorizing the application to the local government commission for $39,425,000 of gen- general obligation school bonds.
Okay, that's the motion by the vice chair. I- if there is a, a need to split those up, we can do that if you have any questions about them together.
I think that's acceptable to have them together.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by aye. No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
I will now recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for his comments.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Planty Ball.
Just want to say I appreciate the hard work of the staff, the civility of the board and the civility of the folks, the citizens come out with the different, uh, issues. I know, I know they're going through a frustrating time. I just encourage everybody to be careful on the way home.
Commissioner David Williams.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melissa Merrill.
I just want to thank staff, we got a lot of really good information tonight, um, that was extremely helpful in our decision-making. Thank you for your time and commitment to all of these challenges and helping us, um, put us on the right path to make, make choices. And I just want to thank, um, you know, everyone for being here tonight, thank you.
Commissioner or Vice Chairman Brian Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank everybody that, uh, that showed up, um, to speak tonight. You know, obviously, we've got some residents there at Heritage that have, uh, been voicing their concerns for some time. And I appreciate their, their activism, um, I appreciate their dedication to come into the meetings. I would also like to, uh, recognize that we had several folks from Indian Trail here tonight. So we had, um, some town councilmen, uh, I saw, um, Councilman Gay, um, and then I also saw, I think, that, well, David Cohen was here, Mayor David Cohen. So I would like to, to thank, um, all the Indian Trail folks, uh, that showed up. Thank you, sir. Um, I knew that I was forgetting someone, so Councilman also Brooks as well. And so I'd like to thank those folks for, for being in attendance and for, um, you know, for being here to discuss that project. As always, I'd like to thank the staff. Thank you guys so much, you guys do a great job. I will echo Commissioner Merrill's comments that, you know, obviously we've got lots of great information. You know, Beverly did a great job, uh, putting together those numbers. It may not be the results that we want to see, um, once again, but, uh, but hopefully we're starting to kind of trend back in the right direction. So, uh, but once again, thank you to all, um, I appreciate it. And, uh, and certainly wish, um, everyone a good night, thank you.
You know, eh, some of the decisions we have to make, they're, they're not easy decisions and all of them don't have, uh, easy answers that go along with them. And, uh, it's, it's tough on some of those things that we have to decide when it comes to spending money and you want to help people and, uh, it's just difficult. I mean, that's why my hairline's where it's at today. But thank you to all the staff and, um, all of our county employees and of course, our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, EMS personnel, 911 telecommunications, we appreciate what y'all do. And, um, I think with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.